Good morning. I call the May fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Welcome to everybody in attendance and listening online. We have all board members present, eight physically, two online via Zoom. And the agenda was approved yesterday, at which time we flopped number eight with number one. So we will be starting with number eight, basically, as the data. I do want to ask the board this morning, if I could, please, that we try to use the hand raising app and that we are being noticed before speaking so we can kind of make sure we're keeping the conversation in order, keep things moving, okay? Appreciate that. And I know it's a little harder for the guys online, so we'll work hard. If everybody will help me, if you see hands go up in the, on the Zoom screen, that'd be great. Okay, we will get started with presentation on data collection and security, Dr. Harwood. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Board. Happy to be here today. You won't be listening to me for very long because we'll get people that actually work with these things every day to give you more information. I just kind of wanted to start it off to kind of set an expectation for what we're doing today. So there, the board has had a lot of conversations about data and where data goes and how we get data and all those kinds of things and statewide longitudinal data systems. And so today, we are really starting with the basics. And the idea behind that is that before you can have some of the more in-depth conversations, you need to know what it is a K S D actually collects and what we do with the data we have. And the short answer is, we collect the data we have to, to do the things we're required to do. Most of that is around reporting, whether that's federal or state, or school finance, because those are our, some of our core missions to do that. So a lot of the data that gets talked about, we, we just don't collect. Now, school districts may collect that data, but it doesn't make it here. And so we're going to talk today about the data that K S D collects and then just kind of in general, what we do with it and then how we protect it. I will say that the, the security part will be a broad overview. We won't discuss in public, a public setting specifics about data security because that would itself create a data vulnerability. But we do want you to feel good that, that K S D uses best practices in data security. So that's pretty much the, where we're going to go with that. If you get questions that kind of go down, we'll say a rabbit hole, but start to get more in depth, what I'll suggest is that we put those on a list for future topics so that we can stay on track for today. So with that, Madam Chair.
I do want to ask real quick, will we be given the specific statutes or, you know, that what's compelling those reports and different things? And if not today, then if we can run it through a Friday note even, just to help kind of know what's compelling those different things, so we have that point.
At this point, we're probably talking more about whether it's a state requirement or a federal requirement, some of those kinds of things. We have some of that in this document. I don't know that we actually have statutes or federal regulations listed. We can put some of those things together.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I would like to first introduce Kyle Lord. Kyle's an assistant director with IT and he's going to start with data collection. And as he gets started, I'm going to hand out a data fact sheet that we have on our website that will help you with some references. So I was actually supposed to flip to the first two slides. So the first thing is just about data in general. Data doesn't really do anything for you. It just, it's just data. It doesn't become helpful till you turn it into information. And so that's one of the thought, what we talk about is that why we use the data is there. So again, the vast majority of data we collect, actually a big chunk of it to fulfill our goal is for school finance. So we do collect data like how many free lunch students are in a district because under the school finance formula, that determines at-risk funding. So bilingual, same kind of thing. So there are a lot of those things that we use for, but the important part is that when analyzed and interpreted, it becomes meaningful information. We also get a lot of requests for other people to use data and Kyle will talk more about this, that we don't share very limited times, and Kyle will talk more about it, that anything is student level data. But because we have so much data, people want to know, and it's aggregated, it's, it's non-identified, but then they could take some of the data that we have and that they make other conclusions by it. It doesn't change the data itself. The data is the data. It can be interpreted differently and sometimes those interpretations are statistically valid and sometimes they are not. Not a lot we can do about that because one of our purposes is to have the data. And then the next slide is really the things that we talked about, funding formula, administering state tests, accreditation, accountability, authenticated reports, which we have to do for different places in public state and federal reporting. So one of those is the building report card, which is a federal requirement that goes up there. So that's all the demographic data. You talked about accountability reporting and accreditation yesterday, so that the information we need for that. And then the last one is ed facts. We're not going to spend a lot of time on that, but those are the, that's the information that we're required to send to the federal government about just mostly student demographics, but then also student accountability and reporting. So with that, now Kyle is ready to get started.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner, members of the board. As Dr. Harwood said, I'm here to talk to you about data, specifically the how we collect data, what data we collect and the why. And to go back to the first slide for just a second, I listened to your meeting yesterday and I thought there were two really interesting questions asked. One was, are people satisfied? And the second wasn't, it was, is it working? Now, I can't help you with the first one. I think that's your guys' job and the commissioner's job, but is it working is why we collect data. At some point, when you get into accountability, people want to know how money's spent, they want to see results. You need some sort of data to start answering those questions. So that's why we do what we do. Okay, so I'll start out, these are our non-data or non-student data collections. These are really necessary to create the place. Where is the school building? We have a lot of highly mobile students. When someone goes somewhere or when we have a teacher assigned to a building, we need to know where that building is, who it belongs to, what district it's in. So that's all the information that we collect there to kind of track that. On our educator data, now we're talking about things like licensing and credentials, just where is a teacher assigned, what grades are they teaching? You know, are we appropriately managing our resources essentially so that we're answering those type of questions? And then as Dr. Harwood said, we have a ton of data that is used for funding, for fiscal purposes, to determine who gets what. And now the fun one, the one that I think everyone's always most interested in is our student data collections. And right now, most of this comes to our kids system. And here in a second, I'm going to talk about the kids to Keds transition and explain that a little bit. But really what we're collecting here is demographic data. For student management, like I said, we have mo-
Quick question.
Board member Haas, would you like to speak?
Would you please remind us what kids is? Because when you're talking to this group, it's, you know, kids.
Sorry. Kids is the Kansas individual data on students. That is our main longitudinal data system. That's where we're, we are ingesting data from schools, student information systems. So sorry about that. Good? Okay. So our demographic data is really for ID management, name, date of birth, that type of stuff. That is really so that we can ensure that when student A moves to a new district, it's still student A, that we're talking about the right person. So that's the kind of information we get there. Transportation type data, addresses, which again goes into funding. Enrollment attendance, which that really, that shows up in a lot of places. Now we're talking about things like chronic absenteeism and daily average attendance for buildings. So that's another type of data we're getting on them. Program participation, what kind of courses are we in? And then even for some specific purposes, what are those course outcomes? Now, and I'm happy to answer questions about any of these, should you have them, we also have very specific data sets. And when we're talking about assessments, when we're talking about graduation, special ed has a lot of state and federal reporting requirements. Discipline, obviously very sensitive data, so there's a lot of requirements and restrictions on that. Career and tech ed, which again gets into funding, but also student outcomes. You know, are we getting certifications? Are we seeing kids completing our pathways? So we collect data about participation in those types of programs and then also the outcomes and we kind of see what is happening and the data allows us to do that. So how is student data collected? Maybe I should have started with this one, but the-
Kyle, I'm sorry. Kyle, can I-
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's better if we can hit questions as we go because-
Absolutely.
-we keep moving, we get lost. So thank you, I appreciate that. Betty?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I can see where from K S T E standpoint, the aggregate data that we use, I understand that. But then when you started going where it was disaggregate, talking about their classes or whatever, help me a little bit, how would the department, how would we use the disaggregate data instead of the aggregate?
So I will say, first of all, publicly, you will never see that student level data. The Kansas Student Data Privacy Act, that is something we do not do. We only, and I can get into the exceptions of where we share it with specific agencies or entities for our own purposes because we need something. K U would be an example of that because they administer our assessment. So we send them student level data so that they can roster the students appropriately in the right grades, get the right scores to the right kid. Now, to answer your question, the real, the use of the disaggregated data is for creating aggregates. That's the main, the key is so we can create those. But also, we provide a lot of that back to districts. They do have to log in through our authenticated applications. You have to have appropriate access. It has to be approved by your superintendent. But then the districts themselves, some teachers may have access to, hey, here's all, here's how all the kids in my class did on the assessment. It's a lot of reporting that we compile for school districts and so that's where you will really see our disaggregated data. It's either used for calculations, we provide it back to districts, or we aggregate it and then share it and then suppress it appropriately so that no confidential information is released.
So I'll just add one thing. So what you asked specifically about some course level data, there are, especially in C T E, in order to be funded, you have to have the students enrolled in the appropriate course that's part of a, an approved pathway. So we don't collect all course data on every course, just the courses where there is something specific to that. And then part of the other reports we have to do are C T E completers. So we need to know which ones pass courses so we know that if they, they, they went through all of the parts of the pathway. So when you start getting into that student level data, we have to have that at the student level so we can figure out how many students were pathway completers, but we would report that as the district had this many pathway completers.
And if I, I was under the impression, and I probably made it up because it sounded good, that districts sent aggregate data here, but they don't. They, they send the disaggregate data and then you put it in those categories.
That is correct. And for a lot of cases, we have to have these student level data in order to be able to audit that. So that's, that's mostly around the funding piece, but we, we have to know exactly which student is, 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 has which particular situations so that we can audit that later on, especially if it's due to funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will obviously defer to Dr. Harwood on all matters funding, but there are also, when we talk about federal accountability for like state assessments, they have very specific rules and guidelines for where a student counts based on when they entered a building or district and when they left. And so catching aggregate numbers, what we find when we have individual data, it does not always match what someone submits as an aggregate number because they don't know all the specific requirements and rules. So a student who may be moved the day before the testing window opens counts in one place instead of the other. And so using the individual data, we have very specific business rules that do those calculations for them.
Thank you. Melanie?
I was just reading the screen and realized that he just hasn't gotten there yet, so he's going to answer my question in a minute.
Anything else for me?
Michelle?
Thank you, Chair Hopkins. So we, at the very beginning, you talked about raw, unorganized data and then you have to make it meaningful. So isn't that, doesn't that get kind of in the weeds as far as being interpreted subjectively?
So I will say it's raw. It is not necessarily unorganized because we have very specific, it's standardized. And as we move to Keds, it's even more standardized. But to submit the data, there are rules for the format it's in. We obviously can't control the quality. Someone could put in whatever they want as long as it fits the specifications, but so we keep it organized, but raw is very accurate. And so it is, it's based on either rules created based on state or federal requirements or a specific calculation that has been done. But yes, that is how it turns into disaggregated data into aggregated data sets.
So, so, oh, go ahead.
I'll just use graduation rate because you guys talked about that yesterday afternoon a little bit. So, so we get information for every student and we just started talking about the cohort. So it's when did they enter that school? We have to know that to figure out whether they go in the cohort. And when they leave, we need to know why they leave. So there's an exit code. So depending on why that student would leave during that four years determines whether they stay in the cohort or move to somebody else's cohort. So that's kind of the, that raw, we're going to say organized data, but then you get to a graduation rate, which is now we calculate that. That is based on a very objective set of rules that we publish as this is, this is how we do this calculation. Now, you can argue whether or not those rules are subjective and whether they're the right rules, but when we put forward information that says, going from data to information, we, we have a set of rules that we publish on, this is how we came up with this and from what data sources. So we tried as much as possible to make any conclusions, or actually, we probably didn't even draw conclusions, but any information, when you go from data to information, that it's, it's very visible how and why that happened. Does that help?
Yeah, you talked about jumping from different, like IPS and different things like that. There are things that the federal government requires us to do as a state and we comply to that and then the local districts are to get the funding and be in compliance. But then you have the individual personal liberty of a person opting out of state assessments. So you wouldn't have that data, you wouldn't have that on that kid, not, not participating in an IPS, you can opt out of that. And if you have-
Michelle, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm afraid we're not going to be able to keep the presentation going.
So that's what I was just trying to figure out is, you, you've got that, but you, so you really have, you also would have incomplete data.
I think often, when you look at data sets, and unfortunately, the more, I will say personally, I learn about data, the more I feel like I don't know because I start feeling like everything is incomplete. But, and an example I would use that specifically is, we actually also have reporting done on how many students are opted out of state assessments. So we do not have their scores. We can't put it in performance type accountability, but another required report that we send to the federal government is a number of parent opt-outs. So we still collect some data element on their state assessment, but not the score necessarily. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so now on the kids, and like I said, maybe I should have started here so we're all on the same page as exactly what this is. But this is our current longitudinal data system. This is the, the core of it. This is how we collect student data. Districts put information into their student information system and right now it is a very, very manual process. At the bottom, you'll see our specific collection windows. E N R L is what you guys would know as the September twentieth count, that's used for funding. E O Y A stands for end of year accountability. So that, that's getting ready to open right now. We collect certain things about attendance and days in membership on that record. Test, you might be able to guess has to do with assessments. Exit is when students leave. K C A N has a lot to do with courses and certifications that students earn. But right now, when it's time to submit that, a district extracts a file from their student information system and then they upload it. It's a manual process. Often, they have errors. I'll give you a very simple example. Like a student, we have a school entry date and we have a date of birth. You can't enter a school before you are born. So there are rules that it checks, right? And so we have that. And so you may get back a bunch of errors. They manually correct this, this form that they've downloaded and resubmit it. That creates a lot of data issues because now we have two sets of data at the district. We have what's in my sheet that I extracted and what's in my student information system. For master data management purposes, that's terrible. So unless they go back and make those corrections in their system, it's wrong every time they do it. So this is not a great process. It was top of the line in two thousand and six and also much in two thousand and twenty five. This is also our ID management. This is where we assign our student IDs and how they're tracked. Districts have access to this so that they can do what they need to do. Any questions on the current kids system?
Sorry, didn't get my name up there fast.
I know, it's hard. Debbie?
Oh, my microphone was on the whole time, I'm so sorry. So one of the issues that's been coming up with our local boards is the federal reporting on the school report card for chronic absenteeism in regards to the children who have chronic medical conditions. And, and it's, it's, it, like, everybody's kind of in a pickle over that because the kids are being told they have to sit in Saturday school because that seems to be the only remedy that that school has for their chronic absenteeism issues, but then the students basically being punished for being sick. And most of them have been able to resolve, but, but that, the fact that we, on chronic absenteeism, is that an actual, I was looking for the actual federal directive and I didn't see, it seems to be interpreted that way though, that they're required to report together both excused and unexcused absences towards chronic absenteeism. Is that flexible or is that in law?
So from, I, I won't answer on the policy, I will defer to Dr. Harwood. I will tell you how the data is collected because this has been kind of a source of confusion even for school districts. I've had a lot of conversations with principals and superintendents when they ask me, hey, what students are you saying are absent? Who are you including in this calculation? It's a fair question, but when we do the calculation on this E O Y A record, we only get two numbers. We get the number of days that student was in membership at a district and we get the number of days they've, they have attended. So for data purposes, we make no value judgment whatsoever. They are in complete control. They just say, this is how many days were attended. I don't have a breakdown of excused or unexcused to create a data element off of, it is simply a percentage based on those two numbers. So from a data reporting perspective, that doesn't come into play, but I know in real life how they're tracking it, policy-wise it does.
So it's truly a local decision?
So, so if the student is absent, it doesn't matter why they're absent. Now, there are some things about school-related absences, if you're on a field trip, so you're, you're counted absent from the class, but you're not absent from school. Districts have complete control over that. If a student is just not attending school for whatever reason, then they count as that and they would be chronically absent. Now, they might have a really good reason for being chronically absent. I have no idea why you would have them go to Saturday school if they couldn't be in school during the week. And I don't know that Saturday school would actually even change that anyway. So that's a policy decision. But we want to know, how many days were they in membership? How many days were they in attendance? And that's the reporting that we have to do. Chronically absent is a definition of a percentage of that. Again, that's what we report. Not, we're not making value judgment and there are really good reasons why students have to be gone and then there are other reasons that schools should be working with families about how do we get them to school? And that's what we're trying to help them with.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question? To my ability, at least, hopefully.
Well, I don't know that you can, can control it. It, it clarifies it somewhat. It does seem a little disturbing to me if that's the actual law. I just don't know what the actual law is because I just, I'm seeing it interpreted that way. That's it. I'm looking for that actual law.
I think it just goes back to local policy on that.
No, it's, it's, they're saying that that-
Well, no, they have to report it. Yeah, but it's local policy on how they handle it.
I, I did not understand that. I understand that the local has no say in it's, whether it's excused or unexcused, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. So we, we can get you the, the, the citation for why we get what, what we have. The, the idea behind that is that, are, are you in school or are you not in school? That's, that's really what, what the federal is looking at, not going into why.
Right. Which in my mind, chronic absenteeism is more about the children who are just simply not going to school because the chronically ill tend to have a lot of support. This is, like, the one that is still outstanding is an A student, you know, but she's being punished because the school-
But we really can't get into the local policy though, in the midst of this-
I'm just saying that's an example.
Right. So we, yeah, we want to really keep moving. Thank you.
Any other questions about the current kids system before I move on to kind of talk about the- What's that? Oh, okay. We do not collect social security numbers on students. That is something that we don't have, that is something that we actively do not want to have. When we have done things with other state agencies in the past, different initiatives, different programs, it's actually, they kind of look at us and go, well, how are we going to verify this? Because everyone uses socials, but we don't. We assign our own unique identity. We have tried to stay as far away from having student social security numbers as we possibly can. Since I've been here, that's been-
Kyle, spend just a little bit of time on the SSID because that unique number, just from a, maybe, and maybe Ryan will get in this when we talk about security and privacy. So what does that number mean? How do we use it? What if Connie gets the number, right? How would, I mean, just talk a little bit to the board about that.
So, so when a child or a student enters into a program, and generally it's going to be a program that is funded, that's kind of the, the starting point where someone wants to issue one of these IDs is because they want to report a child for funding in one of our programs. So they log into the kids system. There is a mechanism. They put in, it's, I think, five date elements, it's first name, last name, middle initial, date of birth, and then, and we have control over this. We can decide what our matching algorithm is. And then if the student does not exist in our system, they're issued a new ten-digit unique identifier. That identifier allows us to track that student across all of our data sets and across their entire academic career. And so really, once you're into our system, I don't look at student names. I'm not looking for all that. I have an ID and that is my record for that student that says this person is this person in all these data sets. So once that's, that's assuming I have a brand-new child, never been in one of our Kansas programs. If that student already exists, it says, hey, no, this is this person and it matches exactly, you should use this number so that we don't have duplicate IDs. And then there's also a near-match process that says, hey, we think it's this- And then there's also a near match process that says, hey, we think it's this student. You know, you need to check, make sure you have your spellings correctly, but we believe we have a student that fits this criteria. So it kind of puts it on the district to do a little research and figure out, is this a variation of a name? You know, did I get slightly conflicting information? But at some point, a student is issued this 10 digit number and that is them. That is how we track them. And that's really what we use internally when we're talking about data. So a lot of the demographic type student data that we talk about, the names and these things, they're really for that first level of ID management to make sure it's that person. The names are not used in reporting. It is that 10 digit number anywhere we really go that says that if you just look at it by itself, you have no idea who that person is. Does that answer your question, sir? All right. So we have kids, like I said, top of the line when we built it. It's worked well over the years, but now it's time to move on into modern times. These are really the challenges for what we're doing. The postmortem data collections is a really big deal. When I said that we collect attendance data at the end of the year, right now, districts are going to submit that, they're not going to find out what we who we think is chronically absent until the end of June because that's when that data submission window closes. There's not a lot a district can do about that with those students in June. The school year is over. And so moving to Keds allows us to do a lot of this reporting much closer to real time so that we can provide meaningful information back to school districts also. I mentioned the data accuracy. Anytime you're changing things in multiple places, it's not great. It's a high burden for districts. This can be a cumbersome process when you have thousands and thousands of students and potentially you have errors in many of the different records. And then the other the high staff turnover actually refers to districts and not KSDE. Administrative office type staff in districts in the last few years turns over constantly. That's my anecdotal. I don't have data to back that up. But being out providing training, I'm working with new people every single year. And this is huge to try to come in, start in August, and by September 20th, you need to know everything you need to know to submit your records accurately for funding. That is a big task for a brand new person. So that that is an issue because this is a process they have to learn in addition to what they do for their own district. So Keds, and the first thing I'll say is Keds will directly replace kids. This is this is the second thing. Kids will go away. Keds will be how we collect student data. The key thing to know about this is that doesn't change what student data we collect. It is the mechanism for how we receive it. And I can get into kind of the hows and whats of that, but the big thing about this is is districts will be doing their error checking and correcting within their own information system. You have to fix it in your system for it to be transmitted to us. And so there is not this other separate file that you can now manipulate. So that that's a big deal for data management on our side. This really it automates a lot of the data collection processes, as I said, as long as you have the information correct in your student information system and you say, hey, I'm ready to push this to KSDE, all the error checking has been done, you can do it beforehand and now it goes. So that's a huge, huge deal for us. It will, yes, ma'am?
Sorry, since we're on the statewide longitudinal data system, where else is that going?
So kids-
Because statewide is not KSDE, right?
Kids, that's that's correct. So when we say statewide, I guess this info and when I say longitudinal data system, Keds, like I said, is the core. This is where we're ingesting student data, but we have many other authenticated applications where districts may enter a piece of something. And so really, our longitudinal data system is made up of multiple applications. It's the directory application that I mentioned where you're putting in just information about your buildings. But all of that is required to make this work as a longitudinal data system. But as far as where the data goes from us, individual student data goes to places like KU for assessment purposes, National Student Clearing House because we send them some student data so they can return post secondary data that we need, places like ACT so they can administer assessments. But as far as where it goes, it really is within our environment. All of our applications are connected so that that student ID will tell you who the student is, no matter what you're looking at within our system.
So when we talk about statewide, we mean all 300 systems that that the state board accredits. So that's what we mean by statewide. So there there was a lot of conversation about a statewide longitudinal data system, which would do much more than that. The last bill was that we would have to send all of this data to the Legislative Research Division and then they would aggregate it with places from revenue and all those other kinds of things. That's not happening. And we don't share the data, as Kyle said, that the student level data is only specific and it's because of other things we need. If the state decided they wanted a statewide data system longitudinal that included other data, our system is built that we could include that data and then kick back out aggregate things. So if 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 they wanted workforce data and the Department of Revenue and the Department of Labor wanted to share data with us, we could match it up with our student data and say, this is what's happening. We don't, I mean, that's that's not something that happens on a regular basis now and we don't send our data anywhere other than to the places that we need to to match it to get data back that we have to do other things.
So just a sec, Michelle. So the $23 million that KSDE has received since 2007 to build this, you're saying is so that it is within our districts?
Yes. So it it was a replacement of an old type of statewide longitudinal data. Keds was also a statewide longitudinal data system. Keds is just the new version of kids to make it. And so there are two major things that are happening. One is how we receive the data so that it has fewer areas errors. The other one is a is how we store the data, which kind of goes along with more more modern data management systems. Doesn't say it doesn't change anything about where what happens with the data, just how we store it and how we receive it. Is that accurate?
Michelle has a question.
That is correct.
Thank you, Chair Hopkins. So Keds is mostly Kansas, Keds is federal.
No?
No, as far as the actual data collected, when Keds rolls out, it will collect the exact same data that kids does, like literally the same data. Now, what it does is gives us the ability in the future, I think something, and I'll take the blame for this as an IT department, we have said in the past or maybe corrected and said, well, Keds doesn't just replace kids. And I think that can be confusing because it absolutely does replace kids, but it can replace so much more. An example I would use is our pathways application again with Career Tech Ed data. Right now, districts log into that and they do some manual type data entry there. There's no reason if they already have that data in their system that using the same mechanism, we couldn't give them the ability to submit it without these extra steps. So Keds can do way, way more than replace kids, but it is the direct kids replacement. What and it does, it also allows for more what I would call granular data if it's desired. When we talked about attendance data and I said, we get two numbers, with this type of system, if desired, you could collect half days or by by hour, by course. Because you have those data elements exist and they're in a standardized way that we could ingest them, but that doesn't mean we have to. It's as beginning, it is just a direct replacement.
So the other thing about that on the federal level is that the way we store the data with Keds will make it much easier to do the federal reporting because we're changing the the way we store the data elements to match a a more national standard for how you store data. We won't be giving the federal government any more data than we currently are that's required. They don't have direct access to it. We still have to do those uploads, just that we will have to do less work to make that happen. And we think the data coming from the districts will be more accurate on a regular basis because, again, you're not, there are fewer steps in the process. So that's where the the statewide longitudinal data system funding from the federal government was part of kind of all states using similar data management. I'm not going to say systems because this is practices so that it then is much easier to make sure that what we're reporting as this data is also what Missouri is reporting as this data, as as is Illinois, and it's not getting lost in translation when you have to take it out and manipulate it before you can send it on.
So would you say like ACT, is that is that considered like redisclosed data? Like it's like a few years ago, we passed a law in Kansas where that if it was deemed educational, all these nonprofit, all these other entities could get collect data from kids in Kansas and ACT was one of those. So I'm just curious, that's a national, that's kind of a national test and now we're now we're almost like on like a national educate education is going on, if you think about it.
So I would say the bigger issue is when the state passed a law that would provide funding so that we gave the ACT to every student. The way we have to do that is give those student information to ACT so they can put the tests so that they know who it's so that we're getting billed for the tests that way. So the reason we're working with ACT is because we're paying for the ACT for every student. So we have to, same as we're doing with KU, we're paying KU to to manage our tests. They have to have the student data in order to do that.
Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So all the places we have to send data, student data, so let's say to the federal government or even our state or KU, how do how do they can send it wherever they want once they get it, right?
I suppose physically someone someone could. We do, I was gonna say, we have very specific data sharing agreements and there's been topics about destruction of data. How long do you keep it? Our data sharing agreements have very specific language that, you know, you will notify us and you have to verify that you have destroyed this after the proper length of time, whatever's been negotiated. And so, yeah, but outside of those data sharing agreements, we don't, we don't give that.
So just because just because they sign something with you that says they're going to do this, does that mean that we know that they're going to do that for sure?
Obviously not.
So I will say, we only deal with with reputable individuals. Now, even when Ryan starts talking about what we do for data security, it doesn't stop them from having a breach. But we do trust that they are going to use the data for the purpose that we have approved and that they will destroy the data at the end, even like with legislative post audit where we have to have a data, we have to have a data sharing agreement for the the audit they're doing about free lunch. They have to, they have to abide by that data sharing agreement and destroy that data at the end. And then they give us verification that they've destroyed the data. So anytime you have a contract, there is some version of trust in there and that's why you try to only work with districts or with entities that you believe are reputable.
Madam Chair, sorry, Melanie. So so if we send stuff over to the state and whoever's messing with the data, if they want, if they want to print stuff off and print it out and take it away, there, how do we know that's not happening?
I mean, so we, I don't know that we, I don't know that we can know that it's not happening. It would be a violation of the agreement and it would actually end up being a violation of law. So like I said, there there has to be some version of trust. Some of that is a required trust because if the law says we have to share the data that way, that, I mean, we trust our own employees that have access to the data not to misuse it or not to accidentally disclose it. I mean, I think that's that's that is a concern with data anywhere is the accidental disclosure or malicious disclosure from somebody who isn't upholding the trust that they were given.
Yeah. One more. So bottom line is the feds and the state could do whatever they want with it. It's out of our control at that point.
So they cannot legally do whatever they want with it. So they they to abide, I mean, legally, they have to stay within the things that that are specifically the data is used for.
Melanie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the spirit of the question around security because I was kind of headed that direction and this may be more of a Dr. Harwood, but I was really concerned earlier this year when we saw the bill introduced that would create the statewide longitudinal data system because I'm going, wait, wait a minute, don't, we've already got that. And so I just want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly, that this is an opportunity for the state to be able to actually utilize this instead of passing a bill and building a new system, which would duplicate that data and open us up to interesting possibility. I see a head shake back there, though.
Hi, I'm Ryan Kernbaum, the IT Director for KSDE. Thank you for inviting me here today.
Thank you.
We're moving past a data question and more into a system engineering question. So with with the Keds system, really what we're doing is it'll work very similar to what kids does, but it opens up to automate more processes, take away the human error and do things like that. Things will still be shared the same. Even with a statewide longitudinal data system, if they were to do that, we cannot share this information with another agency or have it stored somewhere else. We have thought about this. What we'd have to do is create some sort of unique ID that we can share with them to tie our records to them and then work with the aggregate data that they need to for their systems and for their programs. So we wouldn't actually give up that to another system. So that's something that hasn't or has been discussed and is being discussed, but we have thought about that in ways that we would work around that. And that's part of why we're like, we already have it, bring it to us and let us help you bridge those gaps.
Thank you. And just one quick follow up. If somebody were to get to Danny's point, if somebody were to have access to the data as it sits right now, if I said, you know, hey, go look up my daughter, can you do that? You can't look her up by name, right?
If they had, it would depend on the specific data set that someone had breached. For the anything that we're generally giving away or putting out publicly, there's absolutely no way they could. For assessment purposes, because they have that for rostering, they do have names. But like I said, for anything we're doing publicly or we're really sharing outside of the specific assessment purposes, no, they could not.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One thing I would add is when we say longitudinal data system, technically, we have one. Ours would be defined, they call them P20 or P20W or P20W plus, which is pre-K, K12 through age 20, and then the W could be workforce. And some states have gone gone that way. So right now, we do have some pre-K data for our funded programs and we do have some post secondary data that we use in our post secondary success ratios. So we do have a P20 longitudinal data system right now. Now, there are obviously many other state agencies in Kansas. It's not a complete state longitudinal data system, but we do have one of our own right now. Oh, okay. And then the only other thing I wanted to clarify, just in case anyone's curious, we are moving, as Dr. Harwood said, in standardizing our data to make it easier to share between districts, between us and the federal government, and even between districts and other vendors they do business with. It's called CEDS, which is the Common Educational Data Standards. There's a ton you can find online about that. There's trainings if you want to learn about it. I'm happy to talk about it if you ever want to. But what that really does is it just creates an agreement that says this data element will be in this format and this is what it means. So when I say date of birth, it's going to be month, month, day, day, year, 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 and I'm not going to mess with that. It's going to be in that exact format so the person receiving it knows what to expect. It just makes things much more efficient and easier transfer of data. Okay, any other questions about that? Okay. As just to you kind of bolded up there, I mean, this does replace kids. It doesn't violate the student data privacy law. We're not going to collect a whole bunch of extra information. We're not going to go take data from anyone. It's still at a district's discretion as to what they're going to, when they're going to submit. We don't have access to everything in their student information system. There are verifications. Essentially, they certify and say, I am ready for KSDE to take this specific data. And then they push it out into, I'll call it a box, and we go get it. There's data validations. As I said, that's a huge improvement. They don't have to do that all on the due date. They can do it in advance and check their errors. They still have to sign off. We do not have a statewide student information system. That's still a local decision. The pilot is underway. We have about a third of our districts already hooked up to Keds. Next year, we will be running both systems. Keds is our official data source, but that way we can do our testing, make sure the numbers are the same, no matter where they come from. It's really just to make sure that we have the Keds calculations and the Keds business rules in place properly. So if you submit attendance in Keds, it should match what we come out with in Keds. All right. And with that, unless you have any other questions for me, I will turn it over to Ryan. Thank you all very much for having me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So from data and security privacy, I really put that together because cybersecurity has So from data and security privacy, I really put that together because cybersecurity has now ingested privacy where they used to be separate and it is inside of all the security frameworks where it wasn't before. One of the ways we operate is we are transparent in that we do share what data we're collecting with the legislature, with the data dictionary. Now, that just means we're telling them the type of data that we're giving them, we're not telling them what the data is. We also meet all security compliances as far as meeting all the ITech requirements, which are the state minimal requirements for security and meeting all the federal-state student data, data privacy laws, which includes FERPA and the Kansas State Student Privacy Data Act. To accomplish this, we've developed a very strong data governance initiative where all requests are reviewed. If it is, we don't fulfill all requests because there are reasons not to. Whether it's, we don't collect the data, we can't give them the numbers they're looking for as a true good number or what we refer to as trash data, we will not give out. But it goes through a government's board, it includes our legal team, our data compliance officer and things like that. For our data governance here, we have actually been recognized and asked to speak to other state education agencies. Department of Education has had us speak on it and the national conferences have had us speak on it. Recently, at the last national conference, Kyle asked a question and he was given the name of somebody who works here to speak to about it. So this is an area where we are working very strong to maintain that privacy for our students and the districts. For our security policies, we have adopted the NIST Cybersecurity Framework 2.0. The state adopted this as their official security framework in 2024. Everybody is shifting to it. We've already, we were already moving in that direction, so we were fortunate there. We do operate under the NIST 853 revision five moderate baseline. That includes 318 security controls that we have put in place and monitor. For training for the districts that work with KIDS, and we will continue to do this once we move to KEDs, we provide a data quality certification program so they understand how they're using the data, how they keep it private and, and keep it up to date the way they should. And then we also have internal security training, which goes a little deeper than what we give to the districts for our own staff. Within the first two days, they have to, a new employee has to finish that training. The requirements for ITech is within the first 90 days. So we push that to make sure that they know how to handle it as soon as they start working, can see any type of data. After that, we do have that training annually for all staff, so they do get a reminder. And if, and as things arise, we will send out reminders that come up, especially if there's a news, a new type of phishing that's going on or something that we're seeing hit us specifically, we'll say, hey, watch out for this. Speaking to the security, we have adopted a defense in depth approach. This is a multi-layered, multi-tiered defense around our data. Think of it a lot like a castle where the central keep is where all the data is stored. And so if you're coming from the outside, we have a moat, really tall wall, a lot of lookout towers, another moat inside, hedge maze inside, and then the data keep itself along with archers ready to investigate and take out any threats that come up. To accomplish this, we have developed role-based access control. That means that we use groups so that people have the same access as, nobody has an individual access that's different, that gets collected over time, and now they have more access than what they actually need. Multi-factor authentication's been put in place. Our risk management program, that was the castle that I was talking about with all the different tools and settings that we have in place. Continuous monitoring, all logging is aggregated, it is reviewed and will send us alerts if it sees something that is off. We have developed an incident response and recovery program, so we actually have a team. If we do have an incident that something doesn't look like, that we pull together, could investigate, find what's going on. Say it was a virus, we can crowd it in, minimize it, get it off the network, make sure it hadn't spread anywhere else, so, and then recover the PC. The, our vulnerability management program is very strong, has been going strong for quite a while. This just is our proactive efforts to make sure that any vulnerabilities have been mitigated before somebody has a chance to utilize them. If I don't see, we have a compliance and auditing program. We participate with the LPA audits, we also do internal self-assessments, not only of the, the program as a whole, but every policy is reviewed every year. We review our software every year. If there's a change, a major change, we will go back and look at these items again to make sure we don't need to update something there, to make sure that things are kept in place. You guys were talking about the contracts we have for data sharing and things like that. Any external vendor we use, we do a security assessment on to make sure that they are trustworthy. They are, say they doing the right, the right things from a security standpoint and keeping up with best security practices. We have that written into the contract, we can assess them every year if we want. We can access them at any time that we want. For the data sharing with KU and things like that, we also have a good enough relationship with them. We're aware of what their security practices are, that they're keeping the data safe. Can a rogue person at any point go and do that and share data that they shouldn't? Absolutely. But we also don't look at only external threats, we look at internal threats as well. So we are prepared for things like that, so that we can try to help head that off and keep that from happening.
Okay, and if I can, go ahead and grab a couple of questions, Debbie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When it comes to this information, do parents have a right to access what information you are keeping on their children so they can see if they agree with the information you have?
So we don't have a process where we would share our data with students, but because we get our data from the district, we would refer them back to the district to have them look at, review theirs there. FERPA does allow parents' rights to review records that the school has on them. When they come to us, it's the same information. So we, we don't have a process then to say, well, this is what the school sent us about you. And again, most of the time now, for us, it's not about who that student is. It's about, you know, what boxes do they check and how do we use that? So we would refer them back to the school district for that.
Okay, good. And Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It'll be real quick. So how do we know AI isn't stealing data?
At the district level or here?
Both.
All right, so just last week, I did deliver a presentation on how to create AI policy to the districts and we did discuss how you do that, the different, we broke it into two different types of groups of AI. We broke it into a public consumption AI such as you go to chatgpt.com and, and use it versus the AI that was built for education that they're selling to the districts, such as Merlin AI, that has dedicated backend. The other part that we talked about in the policies was the training of the staff and letting them know, hey, write your policy, do not put any personal information in it. We do not utilize AI in that way at this point. Maybe in the future, but we need to wrap around and get our own ideas on how we're gonna need to control that and stuff. There's a few AI frameworks out there that we're pointing to people to, but it's still pretty new and, and things like that. So it is still coming down a little bit to user discretion. But we also push to the districts that it's not just the, the staff that needs to be educated. The teachers need to educate the students on how to properly use it ethically and not make sure they don't out themselves by putting their data into AI in some way.
Yeah, cuz the reason I'm concerned, sorry, Madam Chair, is we found out yesterday that AI can give wrong information.
Absolutely.
And so it could be giving wrong data to all these places that we're sending stuff.
And that's why we broke it into a public consumption versus a direct consumption, where with the direct consumption, they are limiting the backend knowledge sources. The public AI like ChatGPT has the entire internet to look at. So Facebook posts, Twitter posts, things that are not like that in educating the students and the staff on what those are and creating lists of, hey, here's the ones we've approved. If you have one, bring it to our IT so we can assess it at the district level for those items. But right now, there's only a few things that have AI that we're aware of at the district level. Mostly around is either purchase bundles that have a specific purpose with educational backend feeding it or it's coming with like the curriculums and then the curriculums are feeding their information in so they can make it easier for the teacher to look up where something is in their sources. But we're definitely telling them publicly, you need to stay away from or use very carefully. But right now, that is where that is at. That is something that we're, security everywhere is still trying to get a handle on.
So I think one of the parts that's in here is though, whether you erroneously give away your data to AI or whether somebody's trying to use AI to break in. In any case, what that would do is that would set up anomalous, anomalous activity on the, on the servers, which are being continuously monitored. So what that would do is a different kind of AI that's monitoring the server activity would say, hey, something's going on here. So it's really important that the people don't do something to create the vulnerability. But then on the backside, the machines are also monitoring the activity to say, hey, you need to look at this because, and then at that point, you're mitigating the problem, but that's, I mean, that's part of it as well.
Michelle?
Thank you. Probably over the last probably ten years, there's, there's, this is more at the district level, which is kind of interoperable with the state level, but more, I would say more privacy things, like some medical things and are kept on a lot of, you know, computers and things like that rather than in a filing cabinet in an office, right? So we get those data breaches and then you're like, well, how do I make this whole? How do I make myself whole again? Like what did they, well, they'll say, well, this might have been a compromise and this might have been compromised. So the more data they have, like more medical things they're asking and requiring and putting on computers, those are at risk. I mean, those are like why people don't always give all that information even in a hospital cuz they don't want, they don't want them to have that information. So that's my biggest concern is how do you make, how do you make that whole again if we're collecting more and more things medically on kids and then we're keeping them on a computer system where they can be hacked and asked, cuz we, we don't know. We're like, well, look, this is all the things that could be exposed. Fortunately, we don't, we didn't give a lot of information to our school districts, but there are people that will give all kinds of information cuz they feel that they need to, to better serve their child. I just wanna know, like, how do we, how do we tell parents that these things are going to be compromised? If you, and most likely will, cuz I can tell you, we've received a lot of data breaches over the course of ten years. And we've gotten emails from the district on that.
Well, and some of that will fall back, a lot of that falls back on the district and their cybersecurity program that they built. Just because the parent gives that information, depending on how it was given. If it's given verbally, like to a school nurse and stuff, they should only record what they absolutely need. But that's part of the security awareness training that the district would be giving to their staff to do that. Now, if they put it in through an automated system and things like that, it's really on the parent. The, the district would have to develop something to make sure that the parents are aware, hey, only give us what we need or only answer the question that is asked, don't embellish on top of it, what is needed there.
Okay, well, cuz I feel like with, with behavior, I mean, there's a lot of things that aren't academic that are, that I don't feel that need to be collected on a kid that has to do with behaviors and things like that. Where's that information going? And again, is it subject, is it subject to whoever is, whoever's inputting that information on the child?
Right, and, and that type of information does not come back to KSDE.
No, I figured it, I hope, hopefully it didn't.
With the exception of if it was included in IEP or something like that, they may see that information when they go to do their audits or have a complaint and they have to do an investigation. It's not coming back here automatically, though. That's all maintained at the district and at their discretion.
In the future, it could, though, if it, if, if the money were to follow the child and you're going directly to the child. I just wanna put that out there for the public to know. If you're following the child with any kind of money directly to a child, not just to a school for instruction, that's where we can get into, that's where we can get into more things being disclosed and breached and, and, and information that's personal that is to that child. Because it'd be more reporting, cuz there's all kinds of, all kinds of things going in there as far as where that money's coming from, different agencies and there's a whole lot of systems out there that want specific information.
But that's part of why we do the data suppression on reports and stuff. So even to the federal level and, and we will do data suppression of if it's below a certain number and we feel it would allow them to identify a student. If that helps answer the question.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm gonna step in real quick, Debbie, before I go to you. I, I'm not really sure where to throw this in, so I'm gonna have to just throw it, so I apologize. But I do have the question when we talk about, and actually, Michelle said the word interoperability, because the federal government is looking at interoperability promoting linkages across states. So I think that's where a lot of concern comes in, not only within a state and its departments, but that the federal government is looking for that to be just growing and growing, right? So I think that, that's the growing concern, is these systems that get so well-built that they're so much easier to talk to each other, that then it just keeps going. And we do have US Code that they are promoting linkages across states. So there's just those huge concerns out there. And I, I don't know if you wanna speak to that or not, but that's just.
So, I mean, I, the concern would have to be if, if there was a federal requirement for us. Right now, it's, there, there is data that we have to report. So it's a little bit like we put together those reports and we send them up. At this point, there's, there's no way that the federal systems reach into our system then to get the information. That does not mean that could not happen. As a matter of fact, it, it actually is pretty, it's not that difficult to do, but we would not allow that with the current rules in place. That doesn't mean that you can't get a change in federal law that says this is how we're gonna do things. We, we don't get to vote on those things, other than to vote for the people that do get to vote on those things. So I think that's one of those things that we just have to make sure that if they start getting more serious about that, we can certainly say why we think that's a bad idea. Again, in order to see if things are working and to make good decisions, you need to have good information. And so that's, but there's a limit to how much you have to have to make the right decisions and what even you should have based on privacy rules from there. That's, and that's the balance that we try to keep.
I understand, Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, going along with what now you just said and Michelle, there's not necessarily a standard due process in the schools for behavioral issues. I, and I'm just gonna give an example cuz it's easier that way. The student I have in mind was accused of marijuana use, was suspended and had, and it turned out that the parent went and got drug testing and the child had not used any marijuana. So now that's gonna be a part of that student's record. And the parents had to pay a thousand dollars for a lawyer to add to their record that it was not accurate because you can't unring that bell. The child had been suspended. So what, I mean, is that data still out there? This child has graduated, is that data still around? I mean, I, the reason the lawyer was hired was because the student wanted to be an airline pilot and they said that they will actually require them to sign off and have their student data records opened. What happens with that?
So first, there is due process for student discipline. And so that's at the local level. They, they would not request any of that information from us. We are very limited in the discipline data we do collect. We do collect suspensions and expulsions and we collect things that have to do with weapons and drugs. So we would collect that information, but there would be no reason for somebody to come to us to ask for that. Now, once we get that record, we keep it for a long time, but then we, we would never. Now, once we get that record, we keep it for a long time, but then we, we would never disclose it other than an aggregate and a report that said, how many suspensions were there for drugs and how many, I mean, how many weapons? Those are all part of, those are some federal reporting that we have to do. But we would never report it as that student. So if somebody came and said, did this student have any drug-related suspensions? We would say, you need to go talk to the district. We don't, we don't report that information.
And I'm pretty sure we have, the FERPA laws allow parents to go in and place information in their student's record to say they disagree with what has been put in it. If you, okay. So I mean, that, that's, but it shouldn't have cost money, was kind of my point. So it's just standing on the law. But again, that's the local issue on that, as far as you guys are concerned. Anybody else? Are you guys, you're good to go? We keep interrupting you, so I wasn't sure if you were done.
So that's kind of what I talked about. So this, this was supposed to be the basics. We got a lot deeper than we even planned to, which is why we took so much longer.
We're way over time.
So.
I do, I'm going to really quick, because we did hit on the third-party situation. So how do we, you know, schools, like we said, have to rely on that thirty-part, third-party security protocols. So like we have the Power School, the illuminated education has, you know, we've had those breaches and I know everybody has breached, like I get that. But how do we, can you comment on those kind of problems?
Yeah, I've spoken with multiple schools around this and this is where their vendor management under security, their security program would come into place. I've spoken with them and promoted the HECC VAT tool. It's a tool that was developed by the Higher Education Commission for colleges. It centered around FERPA and HIPAA specifically, but it is a questionnaire they can send to their vendors that they must fill out and answer the questions and then they get the chance to grade them on their security practices and do that. We also talked, I've also talked to them about making sure in their contract that they have their security requirements spelled out and in place in the contract, any RFP they send out, so it's known upfront, and then do the annual assessment. We have had talks as well of, since so many of the schools use the same products, should every school have to do the assessment? Or say, one district has done it and they can share, hey, we did the assessment for this product this year, it passed again, here's the assessment for their mall to use. So those are things that I've, I've spoken with them about and trying to put together, help them put together so they can make that a little easier process, especially with the understanding that a lot of the districts don't have a heavy IT presence to help them out with that. And that's where some of the larger districts can really help out the smaller ones in areas that is something small, something they need to do anyway. So it's no big deal for them, but.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen. Sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item two is receive finance issues, which I'm sure Dr. Harwood will be right back in with Dr. Hess. He's in the data world, so we got to pull him back into the finance world here. Did she find you? This is the finance. This is the finance issues.
So I'll start with the one that actually was going to be at the end of the legislative update, but we can cover it now. So this would be a, a receive item that the board will need to address in June and it has to do with state board compensation. So House Bill 2378, I think is what it was, if I had my hand, that's incorrect, but one of them. Originally it was about increasing state board pay. The state board now has the ability to pay themselves whatever they want, but you actually have less money in the operating fund to do that with because there was also a cut and some other things added in that I'll talk about with the legislative update. The, the issue is that the law changes on July 1 so that your compensation is no longer linked to now what is a dead statute that says your compensation is eighty-eight, sixty-six a day. So if you don't take action in June, you will have no compensation, no, no way to do compensation for July. And so one of the, part of this discussion is just kind of what you want us to bring back to you to consider. Because there were no changes, you could set your compensation at the same rate, same daily rate that it was, and we would just move forward with that. Given the time constraints we have now, that probably makes the most sense. The other thing that you will be doing in June is you'll be talking about budget requests, recommendations. So at the same time, we can talk about what you would like things to look like. So if I were going to make a recommendation now, I would bring back to you a proposal in June that said that you would set your compensation at the same rate that it is in statute now. It's just that that's no longer referenced in statute. I, I do think that, while I also be recommending that the state board continue to have the legislature look at this issue. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me that every, every elected, state-elected official has received a raise and the state board has not since 2008. And then the idea that you would, the only way you could give yourself a raise this year is to eliminate something else. You'd have to take money away from someplace else to do. If that's the direction you'd like to do, we'll come up with a way to do that, but wouldn't be my recommendation. So I'm happy to stand for questions and I think John came in just to make sure that, nope, because he's got the other ones on the other, the other policy things.
Any conversation, board, on this issue? Do we have any thoughts we can put out to start with? Somebody jump. Ms. Betty?
I was trying to get to.
I know.
Okay. So I guess I'm not quite understanding you, you gave some options. What would be required? We simply discuss what we want you to do now or?
Yes. So in June, you will have to take action to set your rate of compensation. In, starting July 1, the law says you can set it at anything that you want, but there won't be anything set unless you go ahead and do it. So my recommendation is because of the way this all turned out, that you would set your compensation at the eighty-eight, sixty-six per day, which is what is currently in statute. Problem being that the, the law will change July 1, so you're no longer connected to that. And so, but I, I think you should continue to look at what should we do in the future about state board compensation.
And is that something that's just added to an update for you or?
So at this point, so we're looking at this as kind of a receive item because you will have to take action. It was going to be attached to the legislative update because that's where it was and then got moved. And I wanted to take up time because I gave John the wrong information about when things got, when things had done, so I was doing this part early.
Okay. Well, I filled the time, Madam Chair. We can move on.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
I'm done, thank you.
Sorry.
So just so that you remember, the state board and the legislature were tied together in statute. The legislature broke that and went off on their own and established a procedure that dramatically increased their salary with the cost of living, but it severed that, you from that. You then, in your legislative priorities last year, asked to at least be compensated very similar back. They said, well, they said, you can do whatever you want. That's the law. They put it in law, but then they cut the agency 1.5%. And that doesn't include the federal things we'll talk about this afternoon. And so I think that, that just brings you up to what Frank said. So you may want to think about doing, putting, you know, what, what is your pay going to be? And then when we talk about legislative priorities, how do you want to approach that in the future?
The other thing I will say is that the per diem expenditures that you get are still in statute and are still the same as the legislature. So the only thing that changed is the daily rate of pay and that, starting July 1, you don't have one and you have the authority to set it at whatever you want.
Thank you, Chair Hopkins and Dr. Watson. So I think in the Zoom meeting last week, I asked, is in statute, are, were to meet by law, is it one day or two days that? So that's why I was concerned is if it's in statute that we have to require to meet because we want to come from all across the street so we can all meet together, isn't that in law? So would that be like, I'm not sure how they could just say, that just goes away when you're in statute, you're required to be here. I, I understand the other things, the committees and different things like that, we may need to look into that because that, that's something that's different. But I'm talking about the time where we're required in statute every month to meet.
So I would say that that didn't change. What changed was you can decide how much you're going to pay, get paid to be at those meetings. So the, the, the 1.5% decrease does not have to come out of state board costs, so that, and we actually weren't anticipating that that would be the case. And so budgetarily, we'd have this exact same amount of money this year or next year that we have this year to, to, for a state board compensation. The, the way that you get reimbursed for per diem does not change. And you can make it so that the daily rate of pay does not change. It's just that you have to set that because it's no longer set for you in statute.
Right. Connie?
Is the per diem, isn't that a federal requirement, not necessarily a state requirement?
No, it's, it's, it's in state law. And actually the, so the, the, some of the parts of that, like mileage, is set by a, by a state or by a federal guideline. The state does not have to follow that, but the state law does. The other thing that they use is the federal conus rate, which is depending on where you go, then that, that rate changes based on that. So the state law is based on the federal guidelines. It's not required, but that's the way the state has set it up.
Melanie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind the board, so I went and searched real quick, how, how much do we make? Like, what does that really look like? So if I look up board salaries for 2024, I started with you, Madam Chair. You were not serving as the chair then and what's recorded and reported is sixty-three-hundred-and-eight-four dollars. I was serving as the chair, so arguably probably had the highest quote salary on the board because I had more days that were logged at ten thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars. That is the top. Jim Porter, who was serving as vice chair, eighty-three, twenty-one. Michelle Dombrowski, thirty-six, thirty-five. That's what we're working with. And I remember during the legislative discussion at one point, and I know it was a mistake, but somebody said, wait, they're making over a hundred thousand dollars a year? No, we are not.
So in the legislative, so it, it, the fiscal note for the, the bill, when there was still going to be some funding, was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars total. And a legislator asked, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per person increase? And I said, no, it's, it's.
For ten of us.
The whole group. Yeah. So that, so there was some confusion about what the total cost of this was.
Yeah. And in that figure, like that includes per diem. Like that's not salary pay.
So the hundred and twenty thousand would have all, yeah, you are correct.
When I'm reading.
Yeah.
That's not salary. That is everything. So that's per diem, that's mileage and salary all in one. So just saying, there's a lot of cost behind, on some of us. So, okay.
So based on this conversation, we'll have on the agenda in June and a recommendation for you to set your daily rate of pay at eighty-eight, sixty-six. And then during the legislative priorities or the legislative recommendations, we'll talk about whether you want to request an additional amount for, per compensation. And with that, I will turn it over to John after I apologize for telling him he was going to be later today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So this agenda item is, kind of grew out of the, the, concluding the state board RFP process that we did a couple, a couple of months ago.
Could you go ahead and announce that fully?
Okay, yes. So my name's John Hess, Director of Fiscal Services.
But what we're talking?
Yes. So we are talking about the, a proposed state board policy update for two things. So the first one is the selection of the state board attorney. And so this, this, this RFP process that we went through is the first one for the state board attorney that I went, that happened since I've been at KSDE. And so I was, based on my experience with doing other RFPs for the agency, was, was working through it. And based on that experience, I think it would be best to have something in policy so that we can guide future boards on how the best, to best use the, the use of the state's bidding process. So my recommend, it would be good to start this at least nine months prior to the expiration of the current contract. Contracts, the way we have them set up expire at the end of the state fiscal year, so that would be June 30th. And if you want to avoid the transition between state boards that we dealt with this past time, it would be good to start the RFP process in the fall of an odd-numbered year. So that means that it's issued, there's not going to be an election in between when you start the process and when you're trying to finalize it. So starting in the fall of an odd-numbered year, and so that may mean the same board that approves the RFP is taking the final vote on the recommendation. And then this would, and to stay on that schedule, then you would want to have even-numbered year contracts, so that way it's always coming up in the fall instead of odd year. Because historically, we have done, the, the agency and the board have done five-year contracts, so that means every other time it hits between a transition. So you need to get to a point where you start it in the fall of a odd-numbered year and then keep going forward in even years, even year amounts. And then I would just propose that this be sent to the policy committee for further consideration and to come up with some kind of written recommendation. So this is kind of the proposed process I'm envisioning, just, and obviously the policy committee can throw this out the window and do something else. So nine months before the expiration, the draft RFP specifications, specifications would be presented to the board. And then the next month, so at least eight months beforehand, the specifications would be approved. And so after, at that point, we would, I would send those specifications to procurement, the Office of Procurement and Contracts, and request that the RFP posted at least sixty days. That's a request that we can make, doesn't guarantee that's what procurement will do because procurement has the final say on that. Then the chair and vice chair at the time would serve as the agency's representatives on the procurement negotiating committee. And those would be the individuals responsible for reviewing the bids and making the agency's recommendation to the Office of Procurement and Contracts. And then, so at least sixty days before the expiration, the state board would approve the recommendation of the chair and vice chair, and at which point I would send that to procurement and procurement would draft the contract and KSDE would sign it on behalf of the state board. So that's just a general outline of what I'm proposing and to just put it in policy so that when I'm not here and the commissioner's not here and Frank's not here, you know, whenever that may be, people have something, a process to follow and we're not winging it like we kind of were this time.
Gotcha. And remind me, in the procurement process, was it in there that the requirement lies that we have to send, get my words? We had to send specific people that they would send that out to, right? We had to give a list of.
Yes. And so part of that is when we send the specifications to procurement, we have to provide three suggested bidders. And so.
And that's their rules, right?
That's their rules. And so that can be part of, I guess, the, the draft specifications process is identifying.
If we needed that in there or if it just lies within procurement?
Well, I mean, if, if you, if the board wants to approve the recommended bidders, I think that would be something that we would want to, to, to put in there or so.
So one of, one of the things that comes up is that. So one of the, one of the things that comes up is that during the RFP process, the the procurement negotiating committee, they have to sign non-disclosure agreements on the proposals that come in. And this is where it gets kind of messy, which is why it's better to have the same board approve the RFP. That same board had elected the chair and the vice chair, so that they're bringing it back. So it, this is where the state process doesn't work great with a elected board in that they require this this kind of secrecy part of it, which is kind of contrary to what an elected board wants to do. So we're just trying to set that up so that the next time this comes up, the board says, okay, well, this is the policy we follow and then you know why that's a policy we follow.
Okay, well, thank you. Do you guys have any discussion in before next month on this? Anybody, anybody? Betty, did you?
I, if I may, and if this is in order, and although Melanie chairs the policy committee, I would have a question. If the policy committee decided to discuss these options, we'd be able to pull someone in for questions or?
Madam Chair, I would be happy to assist in whichever way since I am the agency's chief, I I I'm the agency's liaison with procurement and deal with all of the agency's RFPs.
Then the other question I would wonder, this is just me, we, policy committee has not discussed this. But are there options where the attorney, that you would have someone as a staff attorney versus? Is this in law that we have to?
Yes.
That's, that was my concern. I didn't know if we could change that, if the policy or if that would require legislative action.
Madam Chair, there is a specific statute that requires the state board to appoint an attorney.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It has to be separate from the agency is my understanding of that.
That is how I read that statute, but again, I I'm not a lawyer. I don't, I just play one when I'm standing here.
You dress well for
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dennis.
I just want to ask whether, would they, as a policy committee, would we be looking at a timeline, a deadline to to come up with something?
Well, I think we would be looking at action next month or whether the policy committee, whether the board believes the policy committee should work on placing this in policy. And then we would probably need to discuss reminding ourselves of timelines of contracts, when we needed to get that going, which I think from what you said previously, would be fairly quickly.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, any, anything, I mean, so right now we have, the the current contracts or the new contract doesn't start until June, July 1.
Right.
It is a series of one-year contracts with renewal options. So it depends on what the board wants to do. But any decision about starting this process has to to start far enough out so that it can get completed in time and everything. And just generally, RFPs take many months, so.
Yeah, they do. Okay, so Dennis, it would be about just getting on top of it. So next month, we would vote to whether we want this to be put in policy and send it to the policy committee to work on.
So June, June is a, is kind of a deadline then for us to get something done?
No.
To bring, bring something?
No, no, in June, we will vote whether or not you get to do something.
Oh, okay, okay. Just too many things in my
It's a lot, yes.
On my, my list.
Okay, any other discussion, board? We're good to move on? Okay, and I think you have one more before us.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the other thing that I would propose that the the policy committee consider is raising the threshold for state, what is the agency, the threshold for state board approval for discretionary grants and contracts. So the current practice is $10,000. It has been that threshold for as long as anybody at the agency can remember. And it, and it is just an informal practice. It's not in agency policy. So KSD's delegated purchasing authority from the state was increased to $25,000 per fiscal year, per vendor, beginning this fiscal year. And so in fact, essentially, the proposal that I think the the policy committee could consider is to increase the threshold for state board approval to $25,000 or KSD's delegated authority. And then also just to put this practice into policy because it is just practice, it is not in policy. And I think this is something that would be well-served, the board and the departments to have this in the state board's policy.
Any discussion on this item? Danny?
So make sure I understand this right. So the legislature can spend $25,000 with anybody without having any other bids?
Madam Chair, the state law on procurement says that that the basis is that agencies can spend up to $5,000 per year, per vendor, without having to go out for bid. And then anything above that has to be bid or a sole source purchasing authorization has to be approved by procurement. The statute also gives the direct, the state director of purchases the ability to raise that delegated authority for specific agencies and to have agreements with agencies. So this fiscal year, because KSDE has a very good track record of complying with all of the state's procurement and accounting rules and has, you know, is is abiding by those regularly, we were the first agency selected in the entire state to go to $25,000. So that is something that we have done this year. And what that just means is the totals, and oftentimes, this is little things, it adds up. It's not one big purchase, but but that's what, anything above that has to be bid.
So Danny, this is about the agency first. That's what already happened for the agency, not legislature. So I'm trying to make sure we're tracking.
I understand, but I'm just saying, so that tells me that our legislature can spend 25 grand without any approval from anybody.
Well, that's true. I mean, it's tax dollars, right?
I mean, I want to make sure I understand that.
Madam, Madam Chair, Board Member?
So they could, they could give me $25,000.
There are still additional requirements. So I mean, KSDE has to get all sort, we have internal approval processes before we spend a single cent on anything. And everything has to be approved internally before KSDE makes a single purchase.
Yeah, there's a tracking point.
So this is, this is, this is about what purchases have to go to the, through the Office of Procurement and Contracts.
But the proposal is about what comes to the state board?
State board, yes, yes. So my apologies, yes. And so that would be to what has, it would, it would be to match what has to come to the state board to what the agency's delegated authority from the state is for purchasing.
I guess to help clarify that, let's get into the, what we talked about before about how KSDE as a state agency is the only state agency that has an elected board that does some of those things. So any other state agency that had the track record with procurement that KSD had would be able to spend $25,000 without putting something out to bid only with administrative approval. Over $25,000, they just have to go through procurement for the bid and don't need anybody else's approval other than that they have that appropriation in their budget. KSD is saying, well, we're still going to bring things to the state board before we spend the money. We'd just like for it to be at the same level that any other agency can do without going to procurement. The legislature is something altogether completely different in that they could pass a law to send money about anywhere they could. It just kind of depends on how they work with procurement rules and whether those are actually relevant to what they're doing. Does that cover that? John knows that better than I do.
Okay, I think we're good to go for the moment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, appreciate it. We are going to take a 10-minute break and return at 10:50. Let's make it a little longer, 10:50.
Hey, we are all back. Do we have the two board members on Zoom still?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay. We have before us Board Member Arnold talking about a bullying prevention procedure to be prominent on all district school websites or handbooks.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members. Okay, I'm going to refresh your memory a little bit. Last month, we talked about the bullying process and why we thought it was necessary. But let me give you a little bit of history for this committee's school mental health. That was established in 2017. And the goal was to provide boards with unmet needs that might occur in school districts. Under that umbrella, there were areas such as bullying, suicide prevention, a variety of things that the board could act on. And so as a result of that, when we were talking about bullying, because that committee is currently in the process of preparing a bullying toolkit to be provided to the districts, that toolkit basically is something that they will go to to build whatever will work or be effective for the district. In that discussion, the idea came about that we do not have a process in place for parents. Many of us have received letters, calls from parents to help or assist them with their students who are being bullied in the schools. And so as a result of the conversation, this is an idea that fits within the guidelines for this committee to present to the board to help develop something that it is my hope that we will require a district to either have something on their website or in their student handbook, something that gives parents the access of what do I do if I feel like my child is being targeted? Now, you have a document, and let me help you with this. It's all nicely color-coded and has a lot of information. Do not take that as the final document. It is not. It's color-coded for a reason, and I'm going to get into that. One of the things that I think would help immensely, if we had categories that we would give districts to follow, each district will have their ability to create their own. It does not have to look like this. This is not a final document. This is my document and my favorite colors. But in there, what we are suggesting is that there is a definition of bullying, there is a process that parents can use for bullying, outcomes or expectations with each step. This happens a lot when parents take that step and then, okay, I told the teacher, what can I expect? Well, I didn't like what the teacher said. I told the principal, what can I expect? There's no clear-cut guideline or timeline for how those expectations will be met. I think that should be clear. If I've reported it to the teacher, then some kind of guideline for when that teacher's going to follow up with me, or if it's the responsibility of the teacher to follow up. If it's escalated to the principal, what can I expect? Is that principal going to get back with me? If they're going to get back with me and I don't agree, what do I do? So I'm covering each of these possibilities to give you an idea of the reason or the rationale for putting something together like this. So we would have a definition of bullying, we would have a process for reporting, and that would be probably unique to each district. A smaller district may not have five or six steps. A more urban or larger, a medium-sized district may have that many. There might be some that will have 10 steps. I don't know. That's not for us to determine. They would list what those steps are. With those steps would be printed the outcomes or the expectations. In 24 hours, you're going to respond, or 48 hours, or 36. That district gets to specify that because it would be unique to that district. The next step, the fourth step, would be them giving the parents a report. So I made my complaint, what next? So you would get a report of those findings and hopefully some kind of action plan. If they found there was nothing, they give you that report. Or if they found that, okay, this is supported, your student is being bullied, and this is our action plan. Again, each district would get to define what that action plan is. If, as an example, they come back and say, well, we didn't find any basis to suggest that bullying did occur, the parents disagree with that, the students disagree with that, what do you do next? And see, that's probably where the biggest question lies with parents when they contact us. Okay, they told me, but now what do I do? In a sense, and I'll kind of throw this in, it helps the parents, but it would also help us because it would give the parents a process of what they should do and probably take something off your plate in terms of, okay, I want to help my constituent to deal with this, and Dr. Watson, can you help me? We have people in place in the department, you might call on them. But it would give those parents an idea of what to expect. And that's if the parents disagree. The other option too, which I'm throwing it in, I shouldn't say option, more of an exception, bullying versus battery or assault. Now, those steps that are in place, if bullying occurs, probably would not be the steps that would be used if the, I am losing my word. Assault, thank you. I was trying to see if anybody was listening. Thank you, Dr. Watson, for paying attention. You were paying attention to me? Well, if assault occurs, because at some point, if assault occurs, the school might want to call in law enforcement, parents might want to go to law enforcement. So that would be completely an exception to this. What we're talking about is bullying, if your kid, if you're styled as being bullied. Now, there's another element that you will see, I add it to this. We don't have that in protocol. We talk about it often, which see something, say something. Because there are parents who have students that are being bullied, they don't tell their parents. Parents may notice a change in their behavior, but they have no clue of why, what's going on there? Kid doesn't want to go to school, why, what's going on there? They may not share. But if someone else sees this action, this is not, this is my idea. I would love it if we would encourage teachers, students, see something, say something. Because that student may be too intimidated to disclose that I'm being bullied with parents, with teachers. So we do want in place a safe environment for students. But we also want our parents to feel empowered if there is a problem that they have identified and how do we go about solving this? That basically completes what I am presenting to you. Now, to explain this, you can go on websites. In fact, Lawrence has a really cute website for the process. In fact, they even used a highway stop, is this occurring? Stop. I was like, wow, that is really nice. It's not within our bailiwick to design the format that districts will be using, but we can strongly suggest that this is what we want in place, the wording, the opportunity to empower families to know what to do if bullying occurs. All right.
Good. Well, here comes some comments or questions. Michelle.
Thank you, buddy. That was wonderful. I loved your update. I appreciate your time. I have a quick question. I had sent an email to you and to Dr. Watson on some confusion that's going out there on bullying and the laws, and then how it relates to safe spaces, like feeling safe. So if you're in a school, and I just want to make sure that the students aren't getting conflicting, like are we fostering certain areas are safer to bully than others? So it's like, if I see a code, or I see a sign, or something signifies that this is a safe space, that's confusing because that makes me think I'm not safe if I can't see that sign, or I'm around the corner from the sign, am I not safe in a school? So we kind of asked about that as far as what, where does, because it was asked of, it was asked of me as a state board member, what policies do we have in place to implement, you know, safe spaces in a school? And I'm thinking, well, hopefully, the whole school is safe. And I want to bring that up because that's happening in my current district in my area. And it's just baffling to me, and I think some people are afraid to speak up, and I think it's confusing to the students in the school. Not everybody understands what it means and what does that mean by that's a safe, is it safe for only certain people or certain groups of people, or are we all safe? Everybody should feel safe. And that's my, that's my problem with giving certain groups certain things that they're going to rely on that, well, once they're out of school, those signs aren't going to be in office buildings, and they're not going to be in your workplace. And so I just don't want to foster something that's not going to be happening outside in the real world.
And you brought up a very interesting point because if we look at where does bullying have the greatest tendency to occur? The playground, during lunchtime? I mean, those are just, almost ideal spots for the bullier. I'm making up that word, I think. But, you know, when they talk about safe space, you're right, I agree. The entire building should be safe. Is that something that we can, that you want to recommend? What I want you to understand on this receive item, this is a board document. We have the, you have the option of telling me, you know, what kinds of things that you might want to include. There may be something else that I didn't put on the list, but that's the great part about board collaboration because your interest is students feeling safe. One of the things that we did talk about is, okay, okay, one of the things that we did talk about is if, see something, say something. If you see something, am I going to be identified and thus made a target of the person that's doing the bullying? So there are lots of elements that we really need to visit, and we really need to talk about and figure out how we can provide that for the entire school.
Connie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You knew I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
And you answered one of them, parent engagement. That's what the parent was concerned about. The other one is protected groups, which should be outlined in Title VI, you know, minorities, gays, lesbians, all those are in that, but they wanted something more on protected groups. And the other thing is, and you kind of answered that, is is there an obligation for the school to investigate? And one of my bullying incidents occurred on the school bus. And the answer was, they would move the student to the front of the bus, and he would no longer sit in the back. But the bus is another area because the bus driver can only do so much.
Right.
And if it's occurring behind her, and sometimes it involves more than one student, when somebody's bullying in the back of the bus, they're doing several, they're not just doing one student. So how would you address especially the bus issue?
And actually, that, you hear this a lot, but as I said, it's a local decision. I mean, bus, bus, it occurs while they're on the bus. I've seen situations where once that student exited the bus, that someone has been waiting for them, and the bus driver is gone, and that happens. I mean, that, I think more is locally because the local boards have the authority to decide how rules in place, regulations in place, how they're going to deal with bullying. There are some buses, I know that the local districts have put an aid on that bus if it's been problematic because the bus driver should be concentrating on driving the bus, not necessarily corralling behavior. So a lot of those questions probably would have to be directed to the local district in terms of how they would handle that and what recourse would be available.
And Debbie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I actually always enjoy these. I wish you had brought that flow chart because I have given that out to so many parents already. I think that should be on our website. But things, again, this is something I also get a lot. I think maybe Wichita is so large, maybe we get a lot of that. But the issue I'm seeing is, there's a few, it's obviously, it's also involving teachers. I've seen one where a contractor who was contracted to DJ a dance had students requiring songs that, of course, the principal had said, you can't, and they blew up her business page with negative feedback, like the students just ganged together and did that. And there was no out for that business person. So there's a lot of different things that are going on. And I think at the end of the day, and we've talked about this, is it goes back to the policies that are in the handbook. And if those policies are not being followed the way the parents feel satisfied, at least, that they're being followed, I would love to see you looking for ways that, you know, because what the parents have at that point is, I guess, I suppose, only legal options, right? You just, if, if, if... You just, if, if, if you think that their policies weren't followed, if there was a step in between that could be provided, that is more like an arbitration. We had that in real estate, in real estate contracts, you know? If you have a problem with the contract, rather than having to go to lawyers and spend the money and stuff like that, there was an arbitration process. If, if the, if the Department of Education could come up with something that would help those local school boards, because I think the local school boards also feel trapped because that's a lot for them to handle. All those different parents and the issues between and stuff like that. It's just tools, tools for them. And your flow chart was something I would ask for again.
And, and actually, Debbie, you're right. I mean, it is a lot. But if our priority and our focus are the students, then when we ran for election, that's what we said we'd do. So yeah, we have to take that extra time. And the good part about elections is if you're not responding to your constituents and you plan to run again, you just might not get elected again. So they do have that option. And I, I really would encourage families, parents, work with your school, your local school boards. They do have some authority. And contact them. I mean, that's, that would be my public service announcement. Let them know you're not happy. And there are some buildings and, and even in Wichita, I know if families hear this, they come together and they demand. And if you have several parents showing up at a board meeting with a concern, oh, Danny's shaking his head, yeah, they get hurt. So your voice matters.
Melanie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Betty. Great presentation. I just want to highlight, I want you to help me understand what levers can we pull here? What can we do? Because the policy that you cite from statute essentially says two key things. The school district shall adopt a policy and shall have a plan. But when you get to the enforcement, that is not in the policy. And the one key thing that sticks out for me on your sheet here is number three, families should expect a follow-up. I think that that's a key part of this, but obviously we need to move a little bit further, which is why you're standing here. So my, my question for you is what influence can we really have here when this is a local district plan and policy that we're now trying to kind of step into?
You know, and, and the problem that was identified in that area, we have a definition of bullying. It's clear cut, but there, there, there really are no real teeth. I mean, it's up to the local districts, how far they're going to go with the enforcement. This particular document or encouraging us to adopt this particular document won't eliminate. It, it, it will do nothing to that. It just simply gives parents an idea of what they can do and the path, the steps that they can take. Enforcement, I would love to see something in place that says, okay, if this occurs. And again, maybe local districts and Dr. Watson, you may be able to help me on that. Do local districts have the authority to add enforcement?
So enforcement would come under, within the school walls would come under the enforcement of some form of discipline, suspension, expulsion, detention, some kind of separation. Of course, if you get escalated beyond that, then you're talking about, you know, you always can file Office of Civil Rights violation. I think Connie mentioned that. And that always is available to any parent.
And that's on the back.
Yeah. And/or you can, as you mentioned, if they think it escalates into assault or battery, then there can be legal proceedings brought for that. So there, there is an enforcement that takes place at the school level. What often is difficult in bullying, as all of you know, is there's, there's always two sides. The person that's bullied, the person that's being bullied feels a different way often than the person that bullied in terms of their story. And then the school is sorting through that with parents, trying to ensure a safe environment always. So that, that's always the difficult part of it and then trying to make sure that you're doing that. But there, there is enforcement that can happen at the local level. What, what sometimes districts don't do, Betty, I think you mentioned, is they don't follow up to say, action was taken. I can't tell you specifically what action because there's privacy laws within that. But I want you to, I'm following up. And if things don't change in your family, please reach out to us. I think that often does not occur, which then prompts either phone call to you or to me saying, I don't know what happened or I don't think anything. Usually it's nothing happened and because there was no correspondence back.
And the other thing too, I mean, even if districts were to say, but it's, we did deal with it. If it's in a classroom, your, your student could, the student could say, well, this person was moved to another class or I haven't seen. So there are some things that maybe they can assume, but you're right in terms of privacy, they can't disclose what, what they've actually done. It's not an easy area to deal with. That's a given. All this is intended to do is give parents an idea of what do I do? My child came home, told me this, what do I do? Well, many parents, when that happens, they want to call the governor. My kid's being bullied. I, I want to go as high as I can right away. And then they're referred back. Okay, did you follow these basic steps? So, you know, sometimes it's good to, to go through that. Yes, I have exhausted those. And then on the backside, there were some additional options on how to dispute the findings. It would be great if we could ensure all students are safe. And the other thing under, under the school mental health is how you view the student that's actually doing the, the bullying. Because, you know, a lot of times you think, oh, that's, that's a terrible kid. But there may be problems associated with that show of behavior. So we don't necessarily want to say, well, you expelled them. They, they bullied somebody, expelled them. That kid has sometimes, oftentimes has issues themselves. And so under the mental health guideline, we have to treat that as something that should be considered as well. We say all students.
So Betty, and I don't remember, I think, and I'm trying to remember if we even got the full toolkit. I think we did possibly get it and I need to go back and look. So I'm kind of framing this around what problem are we trying to solve? And what I'm hearing you say is you don't believe parents on the parental side have the information they need. And maybe even the school district doesn't have a good enforcement policy or this, you know, the whole of this, so parents know how to fully walk it through. So does that toolkit then not provide that, that is happening?
Okay, it's, it's not the enforcement side.
No, it's the knowledge of what.
Yeah, of, of what to do. And yes, that's all I'm saying is to provide parents with the information. This occurred, this action occurred, what do I do? Here are your steps, one, two, three. That's identified, that fits uniquely to each district. Because as I said, one district may have one person that handles the entire process. Some districts may have many. I don't know. It varies. But when you look at the number of districts that, that fall in the state of Kansas, there's a lot of room to assume they, they approach it differently. But the process should be consistent for all parents. What do I do? And if we make this something that schools are responsible for, then it's up to the school to identify. These are the steps that are in place.
But my question was, is can, can that not be provided within the toolkit to, because that's to go to districts, correct? To add the parental part to it? Am I missing it?
Yeah, because toolkits are designed to, for districts. Here's something you can, as a district, you can use to set this up, whatever the case may be. This particular idea is something specifically for the parents only.
But, but it has to come through the district, I mean, because that's what this is talking about.
Each district, yes. Each district would be responsible for putting together this information and making sure that it's disseminated. And my recommendation was requiring that they either have something on their website and if they don't have a website, that it's in their student handbook.
Gotcha. Can we have time for one more and then we're going to have to move on? And so, thank you again, Mrs., Madam Chair, sorry. I'll get these titles. So, um, so the students get a lot of attention in bullying. But I know that we're both aware and we're, the whole board's aware that teachers are suffering greatly from, you know, I, I've got friends who say their kids who are teachers go home bruised. You know, kids throwing things at teachers and such. And the teachers also need that pathway for how do they, how do they get that control in their classroom? And, and Dr. Watson could tell you, I, I early on met with Mr. Carter because I was hoping that we could work on something through the means of professional ethics, through teacher licensure, to ensure that there's an actual standard that's for the licensed teachers and educators, that there is a professionalism in the classroom that is required to be met by professional licensure standards. That gives them something to fall back on, to act on or to make a grievance complaint if a teacher doesn't think that the, the principal or superintendent is being responsive to the fact that they just got hit in the head with a, you know, a bottle of water or something. That they have a means to make that kind of ethics or professional standards complaint. That was just a thought of how they could maybe do that.
And it is, it is a good, excuse me, it is a good idea because that does happen. This is kind of like an entry, this is a beginning, and we can continue to build. Because that's one of the great things about education. We, we have a foundation starting. And then we look at how we can refine, define, add on, make it better. That's the goal. So that may be the next step, Debbie. Thank you.
We're going to receive nominations for the Professional Standards Board. Mr. Shane Carter, Director of Teacher Licensor.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Watson, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Hope everyone's doing well today. Just checking, afraid the computer may restart on me while I'm up here, but it doesn't appear to be the case. All right. So I have two items for you today. First is for Professional Standards Board nominations. And there are two vacancies that you'll be reviewing packets to fill from this, from this item. But before we get into those actual packets, I would first like to cover a little bit about the Professional Standards Board. For those of you that may be new or not as familiar with it, because we like to throw acronyms around here. The PSB, the ERC, the PPC, the DMC, whatever, you know, what's out there. So hopefully this will help, help you understand and be able to distinguish some of those different committees and boards that we have. So first and foremost, the Professional Standards Board is part of statute. And it is, if you're looking for the statutes, I would recommend you read 72-2309 and 72-23-12. 72-2309 will kind of lay out the composition of those board members and outline the responsibility and qualifications for those individuals. Oh, not being loud enough? Okay. It's my friend. All right. And then 70, well, 72-2312 lays out those responsibilities. And when we're talking about responsibilities, an easy way to sum it up, if there's anything related to teacher licensure, the Professional Standards Board has an opportunity to review and then make recommendations to the state board. And this could be, includes an individual that's looking to get into a teacher ed program, somebody that's in a teacher ed program, someone that's becoming initially licensed, renewing their license, adding endorsements, et cetera. So the whole gamut that we deal with, with teacher licensure, they're there to make recommendations to you all, to inform you for decisions. So the requirements, individual has to be licensed and actively practicing in Kansas. They have to have a total of five years of a professional education experience. The five years doesn't necessarily have to be in Kansas, but a majority of it, if they only had five, would be because they also have to have been practicing the last three years before their appointment. So, and all that's in the statute. So when we talk about the vacant positions, we're, we have packets just for two at-large teacher positions. And I'm probably going to confuse a couple of people, so I'm going to go real slow because I added an additional vacancy because we had somebody resign last week. So right now, we have one position that we're still seeking applications for, or nominations for a career and technical ed administrator. So either a building, district-level administrator that works with career and technical ed. There's three classroom public teachers. Originally, when this board item was submitted, we only had two. But since then, like I said, somebody resigned. But all you're going to review today are for two at-large positions. At a later date, I will get nominations to come back to fill that position that just resigned. And then we have a private school teacher position that's open. We do have a nomination for that, so that'll come to you at a future, future time as well. I know this is very hard to see, but this is a layout of the composition of our board and it's a mixture of individuals from higher ed, administrators, teachers. We have a PTA member and a, a state board, or not a state board member, but a local school district board member that sits on, on the committee as well, or the board as well. And as far as what you see, if you see someone that is highlighted in yellow, then that means their coming up on their term is ending or they have had to resign for some reason. So we have Dr. Jill Bergerhafer, who is retiring after many, many years of service to, to Kansas. And her term wasn't set to expire until 2027, but since she's retiring, we have to remove her from the board. We also have a vacant position for a teacher position to fill as well. And those two are highlighted with arrows and those are the actual vacancies that you're going to review today. You know, I guess I should cover, if you see somebody that is in blue, their first term is ending, but they are renewing to stay on the Professional Standards Board. Yep. All right. And these are the nominees. So as always, we have really exceptional nominees apply for these positions, which makes your, your decision very difficult because you'll have to decide which one of these, these fine educators that you want to assign to the Professional Standards Board. And basically what we're asking, I just put this in here to clarify you that there are two at-large positions. So two of these three people would be what you would make your action on next month. Any questions on that?
Michelle?
Just a real quick question, our, going back to the very first slide.
Sure.
In the far right, when it talks about public requirements, I just want to make sure that these are licensed teachers that are actually in the classroom, not like proximally, like, like not online teachers that do virtual stuff. They are actually teachers that would be chosen, that are actually in the classroom and do, you know, like face-to-face teaching in, in the classroom.
Well, I mean, technically it doesn't break down to that, to that level. It just says classroom teacher, but I don't know if I've had any virtual.
Wouldn't we encourage that though? As far as like that, that experience, I'm sorry, the experience of, of having that in-classroom experience?
Yes. So that is encouraged, but, but when we break it down, you know, you may have situations where someone's filling both roles, serving in a, in a hybrid classroom where they actually have students or, or virtual, but we haven't distinguished in that in the past. But I don't think I've ever received anybody's nomination that they, they were virtual only. So, but I do have not specifically stated that in anything I've sent out.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my question is that I, having gone to the School for the Deaf on Monday, I got to meet a parent who was just going on about an amazing teacher that she thought they had. Would they qualify the teachers from the School for the Deaf to be on these? Because I sent her a message saying you might want to ask the superintendent?
Yeah, absolutely. So by our bylaws for the Professional Standards Board, we typically solicit nominations from different professional education entities and have them submit those nominations in. And if, if, if they're part of those particular organizations, then yes, I would encourage them to apply.
We all good? Okay, I think we can move on to, you're next.
Okay, so I do have to put out a public service announcement. If Mr. Jim McNeese is watching, I would advise him to go ahead and turn his monitor. If Mr. Jim McNeese is watching, I would advise him to go ahead and turn his monitor off and, you know, go, go do something else, and stop back in in about 20 minutes. All right, so, next part I'll be updating you on is the modified, you'll also hear the term expanded emergency substitute license. So before we get into that specific license, I want to give you some background on the different types of substitute licenses that we have in Kansas, to give you some perspective on what this actual license is and the limitations of it. So, we have basically two different types of substitute license. We have a standard substitute and an emergency substitute. So for someone to qualify for the five-year standard substitute license, they must have completed a teacher preparation program, and with that particular license, they're allowed to fill those long-term substitute positions. So if you start looking at accreditation regs and look at the governing bodies, 90, 91-31-34, it'll lay out some limitations for substitute licenses as a hierarchy of how you can utilize them. This is one of the most versatile substitute licenses that we have. And individuals that qualify for this have either, most frequently, it's someone that has just completed their teacher preparation, preparation program, maybe they don't have a job yet, or they haven't passed their test and don't have a job, but they want to go ahead and apply for that license and have it, just in case they're going to do some, do some substitute teaching. Or it could be professional educators that maybe didn't meet a requirement to renew, or they decided to step away from the, the profession and just wanted to do some substituting. Each of those would qualify for this type of license. And then as far as our licenses in the state, roughly 3,200 to 3,500 in any given year qualify for this type of substitute license. The next we have is an emergency substitute license, though we have just two, you know, standard substitute emergency, there's some distinguishing factors for our emergency substitute licenses. So one, we have individuals that hold a bachelor's degree. So if they hold a bachelor's degree, but they haven't completed a teacher preparation program, so let's say, me, I had a bachelor's of arts, but I didn't complete a teacher preparation program, and I wanted to sub in a school district, I could qualify for that, that particular version of the emergency substitute license. When we talk about waivers and those limitations, individuals on this license, they're limited to 45 days in the same assignment, and they are eligible to, districts are eligible to submit a waiver to the district in order to extend those number of days. And you have processed waivers over the last year, and there have been some of these emergency substitute holders. And currently, we have about 14,200 individuals that hold emergency substitute licenses, and of that population, roughly 51% of them would hold bachelor's degree, bachelor degrees. The other emergency substitute license is, they have 60 college credit hours, but not a bachelor's degree. So, different limitation specified in there. They're limited to 25 days in the same assignment, and then no more than 75 days a semester in a district. They're also eligible to be, to apply for a waiver, or not them, the district is eligible to apply for a waiver to extend the number of days they could utilize one of these substitutes if needed, and we have processed waivers for these individuals. All right. And this is the substitute license we're actually talking about. And I'm going to give you some history here in a minute, but first I'm going to go over the requirements. So, if you see it, and it's issued, it's still going to say emergency substitute license, it's just been, some of the requirements have been modified, that's why I use the term modified ESUB. It requires individual to have a high school diploma, and then a set of modules created by Green Bush that are targeted to train substitute teachers have to be completed, and that's kind of accepted in lieu of that, those 60 college credit hours to qualify for a license. They have to have an offer from hire from a district. There's a form a district has to fill out that says, yes, we know this person, we want them to serve in our district, and then there's a set of assurances that they have to sign off, that, that under, that states that they know they don't qualify for a waiver, they know they're limited to 25 days in the district. Well, I guess I should go ahead and hit that, in a second. But, let me start with the requirements. So, they get the offer of hire, submit an application, application processing fee, background check and background check fee, just like all of our normal licenses. But as far as the restrictions, they are limited to a district of hire, so with our other substitute licenses, individual gets the license, they can go to any school district if they want, and fill out an application and possibly get hired. For this particular license, an individual has to get that, that verification of hire from the district. It's limited to no more than 25 days in the same position, no more than 75 days, just like the, the 60 college credit hours, but the big thing is they're not eligible for a waiver with this. So this should be utilized for intermittent subbing. So, the most common thing that I hear from districts is, you know, we had a teacher that had to have a doctor's appointment, and we needed someone to cover down, and we have, we utilized this individual to fill that, but they shouldn't be utilizing them to fill long-term subpositions. But I know, I have received waivers where people had these individuals on licenses, we deny them and notify them that, that they're, they're not utilizing them appropriately in that situation, and they're not eligible for waivers. Did I have a question? Or you want me to go on, Madam Chair?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's go back through the timeline and see where this, where this all came about as far as this particular type of license. So, on or around January 13th of 2020, or 2022, we were experiencing some real issues with school districts having people available to serve, some school districts were closing schools down, and they needed some immediate help. So as we created this first modified ESUB version, which we called the TEAL, which was the Temporary Emergency Authorized License, which we had 808 of those, it basically required an individual to be a high school graduate, submit the application and verification of hire, and complete a background check and fee. So we didn't require a application processing fee, so it was free, and we ended up having, you know, like 919 people apply, but 808 finished the actual process to, to receive the license. So this license was only valid from January 13th or so through June 1st, it expired, and through that time, we were looking to make a decision if we were going to continue this program or not. So as we approached closer to June 30th of 2022, the decision was made to continue this type of license, but with some changes. And we ended up getting 441 people apply for the license, but those requirements were, Green Bush had created some modules for, that are targeted for the substitute license, so that's the first time these particular modules were introduced. We did require an application and fee, because we were continuing on for an extended time, and we needed to actually have that fee to cover our, our background check pieces related to the application, to make sure that we're getting notified of criminal history record updates.
Question, because you have December of 2023 up there, but on the paper, it's 22.
It's because I can't read. So that is 2020 to you.
2022, okay, I just want to make sure I have the right, because I thought so. Thank you.
So, required the verification of hire, background check and fee, and at that time, too, we were also assigned to start working through this with the PSB and Teacher Vacancy Supply Committee to determine if this is something that the state board wanted to continue long-term. And basically, as we were going along, as far as the recommendations, our vacancy issues continued, and eventually, what ended up happening, it was extended for a two-year period through June of 2025, and that's kind of the data that I have here. We ended up having 703 licenses, individuals on those licenses since December of 2023. As far as the requirements, the requirements pretty much are exactly this, not pretty much, they are exactly the same as the version that started in June of 2022, completion of the Green Bush modules, verification of hire, and submitting the application and background check fee. And then, when we talk about Green Bush training modules, just for your orientation to those, these are the actual modules that the training the individuals receive, and I won't read each of them to you, I think they were laid out in the board item, but different series of what individuals needed to complete. Then when we talk about the utilization of this type of substitute teaching license across the state of Kansas, I have this heat map, so first, we'll start with, you know, kind of school districts that, you know, utilized no more than five individuals on this particular license, so it's kind of spread throughout the state. I'll be honest, when I thought I was getting this heat map done, I thought we would see, you know, our western region have a lot more than any other part of, of the state, but it's, it's kind of spread throughout as far as the utilization for these individuals on this license. This is individuals that have up to 10, a few more, and then these are districts that are somewhere in between that 10, 20 level, and then 20 and above, you can see that. So we kind of have some pockets, kind of towards the lower western corner, the upper northeastern corner, and a little bit in the middle where there's higher numbers that have been utilized, but most of those are bigger districts, so Kansas City, Kansas, Wichita, and then liberal in the western part of the state.
Jim popped in with a question. Can we go ahead and go with that? Jim?
Thank you. This is the exact program that Amber Wheeler during the, during the open forum was talking about.
Yes, thank you, I was going to.
I have, I have asked frequently, whenever I'm in superintendent's groups, how many of you have people that you have that are quality super substitutes, short-term substitutes in your district, that would not be available without this program? And virtually every hand in the room goes up every time. So I sincerely hope that we continue this process, because it is making a difference. And school districts, if somebody doesn't do a good job, they just will never hire them again. So, so, that's just, that's not really not a question, but I thought it was important to point that out. This is what Amber was talking about, and it is very highly supported by school administrators.
And I was going to say, from Mr. Porter's comments, probably about every day, I get inquiries from school districts referencing this, and I'm sure many of you have had inquiries as well. Okay. All right. So we did try to collect some additional surveys for data from districts. We ended up having 144 individuals respond, you know, currently, as reported by our license and those verifications of hire, we have about 213 districts that are utilizing modified emergency substitute holders. But not everybody replied, but everybody that did apply, or reply, were in favor of it. I think out of all of our respondents, there were only 10 that, that were not in favor of continuing the program. And as far as the utilization, I was really interested in to see what, what types of classrooms these individuals are serving in, because the conception, or the misconception is that they're just getting assigned to those students that need the most help. So think of special education, and that actually wasn't the case. So it was actually a smaller percentage within special education, but consistent numbers between elementary, middle school, and secondary of, of that utilization. So it was like, you know, maybe 10% of them were working in a special education room, the other 90, 90% was basically like a 30% split between general ed, elementary and middle, or, excuse me, elementary, middle, and secondary. We also took this to the Professional Standards Board, that body that we were just talking about, that you're going to approve nominations for. The board took this up, very spirited conversation over, over a long period of time, but what they determined that, that they were in favor of was keeping the option for another two years. So as we start talking about this, as far as the recommendations, I didn't even put a recommendation slide up there, but I think it was in your packet, there's basically three options that we would have. One is, we permanently approve it, two, we terminate it, sunset it, or three, if you wanted to go a temporary option for this particular license. And that's all I've got.
Melanie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, real quick, on your survey, did those who didn't want to continue the program explicitly say they did not want to continue? Can you give us any more information about that? Because if I saw the numbers right, you're talking around 15% of your respondents didn't say we want to continue?
Yeah, but no.
Am I reading that wrong?
So not everybody answered all the questions. So it was, it was a total number of 10. Some of them didn't utilize, any of them, so they just felt that, that we were changing, you know, requirements, and weren't comfortable with that. And that's the most, as far as people not approving, they just felt we're changing, we're lowering the standard. So that was what they would, most people that responded and said they were not in favor of continuing this program referenced.
Okay, thank you.
Beryl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Having come from a district that benefited greatly from this program, I'm just wondering, you said we had, oh, well, there were three options. One to discontinue it, one to continue it for a specified period of time, and one to just make it a permanent opportunity. But the Professional Standards Board is recommending that we just continue it for two years. Did they share any reason why they did not want it to be a permanent?
Yeah, so same discussion, and, you know, it's a pretty big significant change, and they wanted to collect data and continue on before, you know, determining if they wanted to keep this, because it, it does make a change to what we require as far as the qualifications.
And sitting on, as the liaison to the Professional Standards Board, it was a really good discussion, and I heard a lot of viewpoints that I hadn't taken into account. So many that I heard that really hadn't thought of was, we have teacher candidates in school that will use this, and while they're out of school for whatever reason, they'll jump into their local district or whatever and do some substituting. So it's very good practice for them, and that's what they want to do. So I thought that was amazing to hear. There was also some great conversation around the Green Bush modules, because this is actually the only one of the substitute licenses that requires some actual education before walking into a classroom, like the emergency sub with no teacher prep program. They don't have to do anything else. And then you have the 60 college credits, there's nothing else required. So, my personal opinion in the midst of that is we need to look at, because we had some really good positive feedback about what those modules were doing. So to me, I'm almost wondering if we don't want to talk about throwing some things together, requiring the Green Bush with whatever, I don't know. I'm just saying, that was part of what really came up, that really hit me, because it's 10 modules, it does talk about classroom management, there are a lot of things there. And I think somebody said they had a substitute, different licensed substitute, that they, she told them about it, because it's a free training, right?
It is, yeah.
And they jumped in and said, wow, that was great. Like, it was really good information. So, in reality, some of them like this better because of that requirement. And yes, we have superintendents who are like police, and it's tied to the local district. So they have to want them there. And generally, these are people that know who they're talking about, like Amber did yesterday. They know the people that they're bringing in, and it's working well for them. Trying to think what the other scenario, there was more than one scenario, that the teacher candidates.
Yeah, and there were, you know, a couple of different things, and, you know, how I track data, I needed to apologize to everybody. We weren't able to, we had quite a few folks that may have started on one of these modified ESUBs, but then transitioned to the 60-hour that are enrolled in teacher preparation programs, but I didn't have a way to monitor or track that. But the other is, Dr. Wheeler mentioned that yesterday, you may have a para, you know, a para that's served in your, in your district for seven, eight years, teacher needs to go make an appointment, I mean, they, they have some pretty good skills, you know, going through, you know, the registered teacher apprenticeship program and meeting with different school districts and different pares that are transitioning in that program. There are some really talented pares that are out there, that kind of could step in that role on intermittent basis, and that's how districts were trying to utilize that , that para population if needed.
I think I've even heard, I feel like I've even heard bus drivers, like really good bus drivers who are really good with the kids, and they can, you know, send them through that and do that. I mean, it's just their people, it's their local people that they know are good.
Yeah, and the, and the main thing is that district has some type of relationship with that individual. It's not just someone coming off the street. Like I said, with our other licenses, you get the license, you're pretty much a contractor to go wherever you want to go. This, you've had to establish some type of relationship with that district, you know, whether you're a community member, or maybe you're working, you know, as a bus driver, because I think I got an email about someone that was a bus driver yesterday, too, so, that's, that was looking to get it renewed. So, you know, a lot of different opportunities within the school, people that are working with kids every day and have the best intentions for kids, just allowing them to fill in on a, on a need, as needed basis.
Debbie, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On this Green Bush module, is it something that's just available online? Is it free, then?
It is free.
Okay.
So, now, whenever we talk about free, you know, if, I know you're saying mixing things together, I would just always put out, you know, that's, depending on how big or robust a particular program could, could be, that at some point, maybe it's not offered for free. But, but up to this point, they've been able to service thousands, well, well, hundreds, we'll say hundreds of people taking the modules with no issues. And we do have some, you know, feedback from the surveys from Green Bush after they complete the programs, and, you know, 93% positive satisfactory rate with the modules, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah. I keep meaning to step into it, and I haven't remembered to do that.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I follow on with that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, does any of this experience that these teachers are getting, are they, is this going to be able to be applied to maybe future higher levels of licensing, after so many years' experience or anything like that? Okay.
No, so we distinguish between accredited experience and career progression for people that are on standard licenses, which that would be like our initial professional accomplished career technical ed. So, those requirements, eventually, if they wanted to count that experience, they'd have to move up to one of those higher-level licenses and complete a teacher preparation program. But what it does give them is valuable experience. But what it does give them is valuable experience whenever they're receiving their, their pedagogy training. You know, they can apply what they did or utilize that experience to truly understand what they're being asked to do.
Yeah, I was really pleased to hear about the teacher candidates. I thought that was a great way for them. If they don't have their 60 hours yet to step into that one, then they can just jump in there. So that was, that was, it was really good, it was good conversation. Okay, I think we're good to go for today. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Madam Chair.
We are scheduled for a break. Do you guys need a quick break? Or do you want to continue for a little longer? See what we need? Keep going? Okay. All right. We have Ms. Catherine again. Evaluation Review Committee Recommendations.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, members of the board, thank you for letting me come before you again. I have for you the Evaluation Review Committee's recommendations for the Preparation Provider Programs. You've seen my flow chart a couple of times. We'll be focusing mostly on the very end because most of these programs were approved as new, and they have now had two semesters of operation. So in that case, they go directly back to the Evaluation Review Committee with a progress report to say, you know, we didn't change anything, we had to tweak a thing, this is how it's been going. We want to go on our regular cycle with all of our continuing programs. So that is the majority of programs that I have for you today. So for Emporia State University, they have two new programs they've recently got started, an elementary unified program and then an elementary program that uses the limited elementary residency format. So those are candidates operating under a limited credential in the school district while they take the program. Both of those programs have got going. They were originally reviewed with all standards met and no areas of concern, including science of reading. And Evaluation Review Committee recommends that they be put on the continuing cycle for Emporia's programs. Kansas State similarly has an innovative elementary program using that limited residency credential with candidates in the classroom. And similarly was reviewed and found all standards met, including science of reading, no areas of concern. And Evaluation Review Committee recommends they be put on the continuing review cycle for K-State's programs. And then last, short list for you this month. Washburn's World Languages Continuing Program was reviewed, and the review team recommends all standards met, no areas of concern. Do you have any questions? That's it. That's nice and short.
Okay.
I'll fix that next month.
Does anybody have any question? And you said all of those were, and I'm sorry, they've been going, now we're just taking that next time?
They've been going. The first two schools, they were new, and now we want to put them on the same cycle as everything else at that school.
So they've proven themselves at this point so far, and they're moving forward.
Okay.
All right, I think we're good to go.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Dennis.
I just, just curious how Catherine's feeling about the science of reading courses she's seeing. I mean, we've had so much emphasis on that. Is that an encouraging thing that you're seeing at the universities?
The, it is. I normally reach, I always reach out to Dr. Lori Curtis, to the literacy program manager, and bring her into that, and then rely on what the peer reviewers are looking for. So I, I always want to make sure that they are satisfied with what they're seeing. And when they're happy, I'm happy.
Okay. I think he's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Natalie Clark for the Career and Tech Ed Pathway Credential Recommendations, which always means paper.
Thank you for letting us share information this morning. I gave printed handouts of what was included in the packet in the online materials, but I thought as we went through the slides, it would be helpful to reference. Natalie Clark, Assistant Director, Career Standards and Assessment Services. There are three pieces of law that have responsibilities regarding career and technical education credentials. And the first, I'm not, we won't be asking you to act on it, but we're going to reference it when we talk about the other two. So Excel and CTE, sometimes we call it Senate Bill 155 that was actually introduced in 2012. At the time, it had incentives for credentials. The incentive payments are not active at this time. There are some payments for transportation. But we still get together, Kevin Bronson, who's on our CTE team, and myself, we meet with the representative of the Secretary of Labor, and we look at occupations that have high wage, high demand. And then someone from the Board of Regents works with us to see what programs align with that. So we look at those occupations, that SOC code or the standard occupational code that responds. And then business and industry say in job postings, this is the credential that aligns with this occupation that's deemed high wage, high demand in Kansas. So we look at this, and we do this procedure once a year to see what has happened since the last year. The Technical Education Authority does vote yearly on the Excel and CTE or Senate Bill 155 credentials list. And so that first handout with the header 2526 is what was brought before the TEA. On page two, the last two occupations are the additions that were recommended to be added. There'll be some students that may have the opportunity to take the assessment for the NCCER Heavy Equipment Operations Level 1 or the Water and Wastewater Operator Certificate Certification, Small Systems Class 1. So those are the two recommended additions that the TEA did vote on. So the next piece of legislation for your information that will ask you to take action on next month are related to these two statutes, 723825 that we talk a lot about, Senate Bill 123, new section 10, and KSA 723821, substitute for House Bill 2466, section 7. So the first I'd like to talk about is what we call Senate Bill 123, new section 10. And that is the second handout. And when we look at this, it asks that the State Board of Education and the Board of Regents jointly approve a list of industry SOC credentials. This was approved in 2023. And it may be known as the CTE Credential and Transition Incentive for Employment Success Act. And what it says is, any school district that has career and technical education for students in grades nine through 12, if they're asked by a student, that they pay the fees associated with the assessment for the assessments, credentials, certifications found on the Senate Bill 123 list. I wanted to give some context before that. So it does, part of this legislation said that we have a joint survey. We sent the survey link out to all superintendents in Kansas to see if they had any recommendations. This was also sent out by K-BoR to the presidents of all the technical and community colleges. So we reviewed those to see what would be recommended to be added. And if you look at the Excel and CTE list, the two additions are the same as what were recommended there. Thinking of industry SOC that would meet that high demand, high wage, that industry we could find in job postings were asking for those credentials. And those are the two on page two of the headed item, Senate Bill 123, credential listing 2526. So the Senate Bill 123 list, if I were thinking about it, how does it compare with Excel and CTE? They're identical, except for Senate Bill 123 has the CMA, Certified Medical Assistant. That was one that was considered critical need. So that's really the only differences right now between the two. So just a few definitions. So we're asking you to receive this information for Senate Bill 123. It will also go before the TEA and is on the agenda for the TEA, May 29, to ask for their vote on the Board of Regents side. And the Board of Regents will have this, and they'll be asked to take action June 11. We'll bring this back to you in June because it asks that all the different boards jointly approve a list prior to July, honor before July 1. And just recapping, these would be the two recommended additions to this proposed Senate Bill 123 list.
So Natalie, sorry, I got a little lost on where you were looking. Do we have subtractions?
No.
No?
No.
So the FAID thing that I was getting emails about?
And so that, these are credentials.
Okay, so it's a whole different?
So it's a different topic, yeah.
That helps me.
All of these credentials relate to our pathways, and we look at them each year. If they're on the Excel and CTE list, we watch those and see if there's any new occupations that have come on the high demand, high wage that high school students could obtain.
What's considered high wage, then? What's that?
So we look at the Department of Labor's definition of high wage, and that can change every year. Now, there are some different business rules for the Excel and CTE, and that's 70% of the wage. But when we think of high wage, when we look at our pathway reviews, we rely on the Department of Labor, and they have a high demand formula, which I can share next month. We would like to bring information regarding our cluster reviews. But they look at the median wage in Kansas. They consider high wage anything greater than the median wage for all occupations in Kansas.
Okay.
But the business rules for Excel and CTE are a little bit different because it was written in the legislation for the credentials.
Gotcha. Sorry. So the clusters is actually what I'm referring to when I bring out the other. Okay.
And we'll ask if we could bring information regarding our cluster reviews next month.
Okay, perfect. I had myself confused on those. I apologize.
No, that's okay. These are all related to our pathways, so it's certainly related. And the next piece of law that we're asking you to act on next month is KSA 723821. And it's sometimes referred to as House Bill 2466. And it says honor before July 31 that the board approve a list of high value credentials and standard value credentials. And at the time it originated, we didn't have those definitions. But we felt since we already had these other pieces of legislation in place, high value would be equivalent to the Excel and CTE that the three agencies get together. Standard value would be the list of all other credentials that are related to the pathways that we encourage if students have the opportunity that they could take. So we have the lists. We put it with the board packet. But I also printed out the high value credentials that should equate to the Excel and CTE list. And standard value credentials are credentials that are great for students that align with the pathways but didn't meet those business rules to be on the high value. And those are, we have a list, I'm not going to get into it, but if you're interested, we can send it to you. It's called the Kansas Pathway Assessments and Credentials List. So it's sorted by pathway. So educators, families, and students can look at that list to see what can my student complete during high school. And that includes high school credentials and then also some post-secondary credentials, assessments, and certifications.
Okay. Beryl, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is going back to the SB 123 credentials listing. And so my question is probably kind of a personal one. May not, everybody else might understand, but I wasn't really clear. So are the courses or the programs or the credentials that are listed there, are these for programs that all Kansas students could access through their high school or their local or regional university or college so that when they graduate, they can move right into these careers?
So if their school has that approved pathway in their high school, these may also be offered through the Excel and CTE at the community and technical colleges. So depending on the programs that they have at the college or community college. But all of these would be obtainable by high school students if they have that in their high school or the community or technical college through Excel and CTE, if they choose to.
Then quick follow-up, Madam Chair. So are there any efforts being made to ensure that every public Kansas high school has, you know, pathways, whatever number, that could lead to this level of credentialing for their students?
So we certainly hope that each student and family, through the individual plan of study, understands the Student Right to Know Act asks that districts provide information each year in grade seven through 12 of the degree prospectus information, and also what courses they can take, what pathways, if they have it in their local school, and if they have it in their local community or technical college. Because as we know, the sooner that they can plan or know what's available for me to achieve in high school, they may certainly change their mind as they go along the way, but that will allow them to set those goals that will allow them to accomplish that while they're in high school. I could bring back more information. We really recently, at our last, last year's Individual Plan of Study, Technical Assistance, we have a pre-K-12 scope and sequence that aligns with the counseling standards that introduces students to careers in elementary, exploration in middle school, and preparation in high school. And teachers across Kansas sent their best work that they wanted to share. This year, we're going out to districts, and we want districts to tell the story of what they're doing. And we've had teachers collaborate with us to create IPS implementation profiles. So based upon research, goal setting, portfolios, career exploration, what are these teachers doing in their high school? So we have sites set around the state. We hope that many schools come out and listen to what's going on in our schools, and we'll provide those profiles.
Beryl, but to your que, I think specifically, a 1A school district, I'm going to put you on the spot. This is unfair. Typically would offer how many pathways? Do you know that? I know it varies, but?
It depends on the school and the teacher that they have there to be able to teach it. When I was in a 1A school, we taught several business pathways. We had-
Who's the business teacher? Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe standing in front of you.
So finance, business management, entrepreneurship, we typically had a construction teacher. We typically had a family and consumer science teacher that would teach culinary. We typically environmental science, agriculture, if we're able to. And they have six pathways for next year, thinking about energy and environmental science. But it depends on the ability to have the teacher.
Exactly.
But then also the community and technical college that's nearby, are they able to go to campus? Is a teacher available to teach that course inside the high school? Online would be another option. Of course, we are seeing some schools come together. Chaparral is one site we're going to for IPS, where Atchison, Medicine Lodge, and Chaparral come together and bring community and technical college instructors, as well as students from all the schools together, so they can offer it. So it varies by school.
Yeah, but I wanted you to know, it, it varies usually because do I have an instructor that is passionate about, you know, that can teach in that area? And/or do I have a community college or a technical college nearby? So in McPherson, we were fortunate because we had two private colleges, and Hutchinson Community College, plus the school district. So we could offer, let's say, more than, maybe a more rural that just had the school district and were 60 miles away from the nearest community college or technical college.
It is, it is definitely about having the teacher. So, oh, Debbie, I'm sorry, I didn't even see that. Good thing you grinned at me. I didn't even see.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just because of our last presentation, something that might be added here is this new emergency level substitute license that is only for high school graduation, that you might be able to prepare them in advance, having them finish those modules from Green Bush and stuff like that. So they graduate all ready, ready to go. Just another preparatory.
And there are some schools, we heard in some parts of the state last week, as far as preparing teachers in high school, I think we'll hear more about that. And business and industry sometime, if they're available, there's other routes to the classroom that they could teach in those areas of expertise.
Okay. Yes, yes, I do. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a great rest of your day. We are going to take a 10-minute break before we jump into the legislative, which will take us into an executive session. So, we will come back at 12, according to my computer, 16. Board, we are back. And Dr. Harwood, glad to see you back, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be back, and I even paid attention to what actually changed the agenda this time. Because I thought I had more time, but then I thought, well, Ben did that yesterday, so I should come down sooner. So, I'm going to go through a legislative update. Now, the last time we met, the legislature was almost done. So I'm going to go through some of it a little quicker, but I'm happy to stop and take questions. But some of it you've heard since March. So, we won't spend as much time on that. So just a little bit, so the legislature ended on April 11th, after 89 days. So, the number of days is typical, they usually schedule each session for 90 days. Getting done a couple of days early is not a big deal. But the date is much earlier. So I was looking at next month's agenda, looking at for last year, and I saw the legislative update in June. There won't be anything happening, so we won't do a legislative update in June. So, this will be done. One of the differences is, this was so early, that they actually got finished before the consensus estimating groups had reported. And that's important, because one of those is the education estimating group, which we'll talk a little bit about as we go through here. So, the good news was, is that when the consensus estimates came out, they didn't show a lot of bad stuff. So, they upgraded F Y 25 by 1.6%, and F Y 26 by 2.2%. Now, you have to remember that 2025 was actually reduced from last spring by 4% because of tax cuts. But it did, either the tax cuts didn't cost as much, or other revenues, however that worked out, it's up 1.6%. Something that we have to keep an eye on, is that this year's budget is between $700,000, $800,000, million dollars, expenditures above revenues. Keep in mind, they did this on purpose, because they have big cash balances. So part of what they were doing with tax cuts last year, was spending down balances. And so you can have this, I mean, what most people would say, kind of being underwater with this, is fine, for a while. The problem is, is that in F Y 29, if we stay on this track, will be, the state will end the year $730 million in the hole. So this is, this is always that balancing act. If you're trying to spend down balances, you need to spend more than you're taking in. But you can only do that for so long, and then you have to adjust. And you either have to adjust expenditures or revenues. They'll have to make a decision about that at some point. Or, that decision starts to get made for you, because then you don't have enough money to pay the bills, so then we start prorating everything. So, that'll just be something to think about for future years. So one of the other things that happened with this, is that the base for next year is set at 5615. We were projecting it was 56, we're going to be 5611. I'd been telling school districts all along, you expect it to be a little bit lower. However, since November, when we made the first one, inflation has been higher than expected, so it's up. So one of the things about this, is it's the C P I U, it's a three-year average. Because if you've been listening to anything on the news, inflation is not at 4.4%. But when you take the average over 36 months, that's what it is. Now, what we've been telling school districts is, that the high months, the 6% and 7% months that were in the past, those are going to drop off before we do this again. So we're really expecting the next one to be something more like 2.7% as that gets, balances out. This average was done on purpose, to kind of stop the, you know, real big things. What that meant for school districts was that inflation went up quickly, but the Bay State aid did not. Now, inflation went down fairly quickly too, but the Bay State aid increases are not falling as fast because of three-year average. Happening exactly the way it was supposed to happen, gives you time to kind of adjust to it as you move forward. So, with that, we'll move into some of the bills that were published. Senate Bill 2 was about Greeley County, that one got done early, so we've talked about that several times. Again, these were, this is actually in law now, because it was when published in the register. Same thing with antisemitism, that was one that was already, I think, had passed before then, when we got there. You know, what we're telling districts is, don't discriminate, and you'll be fine. The Senate Bill 114, this one was, still had some things going on with it, but this has to do with students that are not enrolled in the public school in which they reside can participate in casey activities. This then adds in ancillary activities as well, which would be pep rallies, and lettering, and those kinds of things. We've gotten questions, and you may get questions about, well, what about graduation? Well, graduations should not apply at all, because districts usually don't let their own students who didn't earn a diploma participate in graduation. So you certainly wouldn't have somebody that wasn't earning your diploma for taking graduation. There are some other things, like homecoming, how does that fit in? What this does, the districts can make up policies about that, if it's not specifically tied to the casey activity. So, the reason that this one was published at the register as well, is that they added CAMHS, which is the Kansas Academy of Math and Science. The idea was that maybe they could participate in track this year. I don't, I still don't think they got done in time for that, but could have been that way. Budget, we'll talk about in a minute, so we'll skip over that one. 2031, this would be about the motorcycle driver's license, it's only two school districts, but they could do that for the summer if they needed to. So these are, come into our law July 1. The first one is the statewide property tax for state institutions. So again, with your role with the Kansas School for the Deaf and Kansas School for the Blind, this is important, because this is a one-and-a-half mil levy that has been eliminated. That function, much like capital outlay does for other districts, for state institutions, which includes the Kansas School for the Deaf and School for the Blind. So when they make those requests to the legislature for building improvements and those kinds of things, this was a dedicated tax for that, that's gone. The legislature has said, we'll just pay for it out of a general fund, that's fine. If you've ever been where you had a dedicated resource for something, and they take it away, and they say, we'll take care of it over here, they don't always remember that down the road. And so I think it's going to be important for the state board to remember that, as you are advocating for the School for the Deaf and School for the Blind. Senate Bill 45, this is one, and you talked a little bit about graduation rates yesterday. So there's the federal four-year cohort graduation rate, and it has, the cohort is defined by who starts in, who is there in ninth grade, and then the people that come and go for the right reasons. What this law says, is that for accreditation only, we have to have a second graduation rate, and we won't count in the cohort, students that transfer to non-accredited public schools, which includes homeschool. So if a parent, they, right now, with the, with the four-year cohort, if you transfer to homeschool, you stay in the cohort, but you count as a non-graduate. For this one, you would no longer be counted in the cohort. So, that one, there's, I mean, I can see some sense behind that one, because it's, this is a choice the parents made, and why do you lower the, the school's graduation rate because of that? Well, the reason that is, that's the federal rule, so we were following it. The next one is a little more concerning to me, and if you're also excluding students that transfer in, credit deficient. Now, it doesn't, the, we're defining the 75% of expected credits, because that's in a different bill, or different law. And so what that would mean is, if a student comes in, and they should have 12 credits, and they only have seven, well, eight is 75%, so you wouldn't, they would, they would not go into the cohort. You cannot be credit deficient as a first semester freshman. You could be as a second semester freshman, and as a sophomore. My concern with this one is it, we still need to be concerned about those students who come in credit deficient. You know, having been, working in school districts, I understand the frustration of a school where a student comes in as a second semester senior with four credits, and there's no way they're going to graduate. And because you were the last school of attendance, that lowered your graduation rate. I understand that frustration, but we don't want to take away, I guess, the, the need to continue to help that student be successful how you can. So we just have to keep an eye on that one. The other thing that's going to come up for you then, is that as you set the, the guidelines for what is acceptable graduation rate, if you're using this new one, it's going to have to be higher than what the old one would be. Because across the board, this will always be higher. Because across the board, this will always be higher, well, equal to or higher because you're taking people out that didn't graduate, so graduation rates will be higher.
Frank, if I could, on this one too, because this has to do with, and maybe it's in there and I'm just not seeing the words or heard them, the virtual school aspect, correct?
It started off for, only for virtual schools. Because the, the part about being credit deficient was already in for virtual schools. It was a virtual school provider that brought this forward for these people that transferred out. The committee said, well, it doesn't make sense just to do it for virtual schools, why wouldn't we do it for everybody? And that's what it changed into. And then 175 is about athletic trainers. We kind of threw this one in late, so we didn't talk about this one before. What it's, we think this is actually getting Kansas positioned to be host sites for some of the World Cup things. Because what it says is that you can, if you're an athletic trainer and you have a license in another state or another country, you can practice as an athletic trainer in Kansas for the team that you work for. So the reason we put that on there is that we said, you might want to check with other states. Because if you are a border state and you go across state lines, your athletic trainers should know whether or not they can practice in that state or not. So could have put that on there for that. We don't think it has anything to do with schools, but it's one of those things that does make a difference when schools are going across state lines for participation. All right, 2022, this one is going to have a big impact on school districts. And it will change the way you see bond applications. Because now, starting next year, the only time you can have bond elections are in August, November, and March. So you will notice that you get those every month, you get one or two moving along. My guess is that's going to be a condensed window now. And so if we, you may see, well, you didn't do any for several months and now all of a sudden you've got, we average about 25 a year. And so you may see 10 or 15 at one time and then none for a long time. What doesn't change anything about it other than when they can hold the election. For school districts, they'll just have to plan differently. There's, it's a long process, they just have to make the plans different. 2033 is the, this was actually, you talked about this yesterday. This was the one that said that you had to add anybody that was accredited by the International Multicentury. So you actually fixed this problem yesterday. The only interesting thing about this one was you made the decision to have Phillips Fundamental Learning Center on the accredited list. So we got told, okay, it's not going to go anywhere. It passed the House, then it passed the Senate, and it got vetoed. And then they overrode the veto for a law that didn't do anything. So, yeah.
We did actually have another program come through that it seems like accredited, so there's that.
So, but now you've taken care of it by also, I mean, so you'll, you'll take care of that next month anyway. So, all right. 2045, this is the one that creates the Office of Early Childhood. From KSDE's perspective, parents as teachers will move for 2027. KSDE will still manage it during FY 2026, which is coming up. But when it's time to do the approvals for 2027, this office will take care of that, is my understanding. So this is actually a planning year, and then those, all those go to one place. So KSDE will keep, and the state board will keep management over school-based preschools. So preschool at-risk, the preschool pilot, and then the, any of the special education preschool stay with KSDE. And then school psychologists, we talked about this one. It does impact some licensure things, it's just, it's more compact things that we've talked about. This just includes school psychologists. There are other people that were, I know that like cosmetologists were included in this bill too, but we only talked about school psychologists. And then 2102, military students. Again, this one does not take place until July 1, but we told districts, you can do that now. All it really does, we didn't know that there was a problem in the state. This kind of goes along, came from a kind of an outside agency about the things that they advocate for for military students across the country. The important thing that's in this is that if a school, if a district does not have open seats for open enrollment, they would start the enrollment process without the military impacted student having an address. But they could still say, you will have to show this that you live in the district before you can attend. And so that's still part of that. Has some information in there specifically about IEPs that were actually just restating other laws, but kind of put that in there anyway. 2125, this one was not done last time we talked because this was about the 20 mil levy. So last time I said, one thing we're waiting on is for them to reauthorize the 20 mil levy. Otherwise, that's an $875 million hole in the budget that was already 700, 800 million dollars short. That would have been problematic. There was some concern that there would be a lot of things put into this bill that then the governor would veto, and then they'd have to come back and reauthorize it. That did not happen. There were actually some things that cleaned some things up that will help districts. One of the things that was in there is that with the revenue neutral rate, if a district did not exceed the revenue neutral rate, they had to certify their budget to the county by August 25. But if you said you were going to exceed it, whether you did it or not, you didn't have to do that till October 1. So they've taken away the August 25 date. Everybody turns in their budget to the same time now. They'll, they're due to KSD on September 20th, they're due to the county on October 1. So it really kind of cleaned some things up that made some sense. The next one is interesting, is that if a municipality does not turn in a budget to the county clerk, the county clerk will authorize tax levies to collect the same amount of funding that the district got last year. So we're telling districts, you should not do this on purpose. Where it can help districts out a lot is if they've gone through the process, but there's a technical problem. This has happened before where a publication deadline was met or a hearing was done differently. And so somebody protests their, their budget. And so what would happen then is that it would revert back to being revenue neutral, which will help the district out versus we get into this thing about there's no authority to collect taxes at all, which kind of throws everything into a bad place pretty quick. So we're telling districts, don't do this on purpose, but it may help you out if you have some sort of technical problem along the way. The last one was changes to the revenue neutral forms. It's not a big deal for us, the counties just have to, you have to, they have to have one column to the form. The good thing for districts and actually all municipalities is that the state will pay for the mailing of the revenue neutral rate notification for at least one more year. So that was supposed to go back to where the county would prorate the expenditure of sending out that letter. But now the state's continuing to pay for it. All right, 2134, this is the coma one, and this is the one that I'm going to let Mark advise you about at some point. The cora part is pretty straightforward because it is, it really just says you can't charge more to produce a record than it costs you to produce the record. And that the person that asked for it, if you say, hey, it's $5,000, they could say, well, show me the receipts, and then you'd have to show that to them. So that's not a big deal. If it's more than five hours or $200, you have to, you're supposed to work with the request or to minimize the cost. A lot of times when you get requests, you know, it's a request, right? I've had one every email for the last 42 years. And it's like, you know, if you, if you told us what you were really looking for, we could help you maybe get it at some point in the near future. And so we, those are the things that are always going on. The other thing is we have to do is we have to, we have to have the lowest-cost staff person that can produce the record, produce the record. That means so that we should not have Randy making copies and then charge his daily rate for producing the copies. I guess I don't know that, that's, that's what, that's up to you guys. The parts that are a little bit more confusing are the parts with, that are about coma instead of cora. The first one is not a big deal for the state board in that if you livestream part of the meeting, you have to livestream the whole meeting. So the state board does that, you show the whole meeting. There are some municipalities that had stopped livestreaming public comment because of things that were being said. That would no longer be allowable. So if you, now, you don't have to livestream any of it. That's not required. Unfortunately, if a municipality decides we're not going to do any of it, that would make the meeting less accessible to the public. So, but that would be the consequence for this. The next part that I think you can need some advice on is coma applies to a quorum of a subcommittee created by a public body. And so the example I've been using for this is your policy committee. So you created a policy committee, which is a subcommittee, and it has how many people in it? Three. So a quorum of three is two. So unless the policy committee meets with only one person, it's subject to coma. And so that's something that I think needs, again, I don't give legal advice. Well, so it says that coma applies to a quorum of a subcommittee created by a public body. So the state board is a public body. You have created a subcommittee for policy that has three people on it. And a quorum of three is two. So if you have more than one person meet about policy, of the policy committee, it's subject to open meetings. Now, a lot of times what you've done, I mean, public bodies have put together subcommittees so that you can not go through all of the things, but they can't do anything. They have to come back, I mean, they have to come back and do that, but it makes the process easier. So that may be something that has to be considered with subcommittees of a public body. July 1, yeah. So if you're going to have a policy committee, you should do it in June, so. All right, next is 2160. We put this on for, for school districts, it's a municipal whistleblower act. There's already one for the state and federal employees. This just says that a municipal employee, which would be cities, counties, and school districts, you can't take, you can't, if they disclose something unlawful or dangerous, you can't take any actions against them for doing that. So most districts have policies like this, now it's just a law. And then 2382 or 275, we've talked about the pay part of this. This was, this actually, conversation was going to lead into that next part, but we've already done that. The other part is the fetal development video. We are, KSD is not technically a part of doing this, this is a rule for school districts. We're trying to put together some guidance for districts about what we think in standards or in licensure would kind of trigger. If you're doing this kind of thing, you should probably be thinking about whether or not you have to show this video or not. So also trying to help them so that, we don't think the intent was that, since we have human growth standards at every grade, we don't think the intent was that the student sees the video 13 times. So when does it make the most sense? Trying to tie it down to when they're actually talking about fetal development versus, you know, as a kindergartner, just typical, I mean, healthy living kinds of things that are, that are actually part of our human growth and development standards. So working on guidance for that. So a little bit about the budget then, so we talked about this. Originally, they cut things out of the current year. All of those are, were not taken out. For next year, there will be no Safe and Secure Schools grants. Professional development will not be funded for state, special, professional development state aid will not be funded. CTE transportation, state in at the same amount. Mentor teachers and the Teachers of Excellence. Again, Teachers of Excellence is the reimbursement for the stipend that is required for nationally board-certified teachers. And then Spark Wheel moved to DCF, which is not a, that was not a big thing. So you may remember that on mentor teachers and professional development, you had a budget request for an enhancement to get to actually what the statute allows for reimbursement. And now there's nothing with that. So next year, as we start talking about the 26 session, that will be certainly something we will bring up is, do we want to ask for that to be restored?
Yeah, Betty has a question.
This is a delayed reaction. Let's go back because we've always looked at the quorum as for the board. So they're specifically saying now quarums have to be based on the committee size and not the board.
That is how I understand the, the bill as written. But I will leave it to the board's attorney to give you legal advice on that.
No, I just, I had to go back to that because is that just for subcommittees? It doesn't change any of the other where we look at board quorum?
No, so for the, so the public body is 10 members, so a quorum is still six. But if the public body creates a subcommittee, now a quorum, coma applies to a quorum of the subcommittee.
Okay, so it is just that, so, okay, that's what I wanted to clear.
So nothing changed about how the public body meets. It's just whether or not, before, if you didn't have six board members on the subcommittee, then open meetings didn't apply. If, when you set the size of the subcommittee at three, now it's a quorum of three.
Even though they can't do anything?
That, so all the, all they can, you make recommendations. Your subcommittee has no authority to enact anything. It's just, it's actually just a way for the board to be more efficient with the work you're doing. Now, again, you don't have to livestream those meetings or anything like that, but you'd have, you'd have to advertise. I mean, that's, yeah, that's why I, again, yeah.
Michelle?
So does that just apply to, who does that apply, does that apply to legislators as well?
Well, the legislature has different rules for coma. So I don't think, I don't think it does.
So do we know who they were targeting? Was there a certain target? Because most of the time there's a target in the midst of there somewhere.
We were paying attention to some of the things that were school board specific because they were talking about you had to have public comment at every meeting and all this kind of, and that bill didn't make it anywhere. We were not spending a lot of time with this bill. So I was not in the committees to do that, we can try to find some of those things out.
I'm just curious, I don't.
All right, so we went through that. So then the other thing is that, so consensus estimates, this actually number is probably a little bit low because we didn't do the math again, half of the base went up by $4. But, I mean, there was a lot of new SGF going in, $208 million. So when the legislature talks about it's a lot of money, it is. The thing to keep in mind is that that was based on inflation. So it's not necessarily new buying power. And it's actually making up for buying power they lost as the three years kind of went up and down. But it's a lot of money. $10 million for special education, just keep in mind, sometimes you'll hear that it's $85 million. That's over two years because it was 75 last year, 10 million this year. So it's only 10 million new dollars. And it's actually a net of $7.5 million because $2.5 million they put in last year were federal funds that didn't come forward. Whereas the $208 million is a 4.4% increase. The $10 million is a 1.5% increase to, to state funds and about a 0.6% increase to all special education expenses. So it's just, it's not going to keep up with education expenses. We do have funding for two staff members to help with the at-risk accountability plans that go into effect in two years. We have to use existing funds for the E-rate match. We've been using ARPA funds for this for years, now we have to use existing funds. This actually, it says $500,000, it is varied between $40,000 and $300,000. The youth career program, that is a virtual reality youth exploration program for middle schoolers. That is a partnership between Boys and Girls Club and the Y and 4H, several other groups. So we have to give them $320,000. It is a two-to-one state match, so they have to get at least $110,000 to bring that up. There was a Spark Wheel and American History Online Supplement. Those were vetoed and not overridden. They were overridden in the Senate, the House did not override those. So a couple of other things, so I talked about, there's no Safe and Secure Schools grant money. The $5 million that would have been there got moved to the age- The $5 million that would have been there got moved to the AG's office. So the AG's office this year in 2025 will get $10 million to put together an RFP for an AI gun detection software that any public school can participate in. It's a two-year pilot. I'm hoping that means '26 and '27 because if it means '25, nothing, nothing's going to happen in '25. After that time, the school districts would have, if they wanted to continue, would have to fund it locally. So ad language encouraging expenditures of existing funds for the science of reading. You've been doing that since 2018, so I don't, but I think that's kind of an attaboy for you. This was a good thing to do, so keep doing it. I'm a positive person.
When we get to the federal discussion, that has, that may have some impact.
Good. This other one was interesting. Ad language allowing foreign exchange students to reside in the district to enroll. It's already required. If they, if they reside in the district, you have to. Now, foreign exchange students only get funded for one year, that has to do with their visa. What's that? What?
I can't hear you, Michelle. Can you?
Yeah. The foreign exchange student, who funds that student for that one year?
The state does.
The state.
Yeah. And, and so, but they'll only do it for one year. If they come back another year, their visa would not allow for that, then you'd have to charge them tuition. But what we've been telling districts is if you are expecting a foreign exchange student, you should just count those in your projected enrollment, and it's, it's always been fine. You treat them as a resident of your district if they are through a, an approved program. So we get into a thing between a foreign exchange student, the foreign exchange program takes care of all of the visa requirements. If you have a, just a foreign student, it depends on what visa they're on, whether or not they can work with a school or not. So that's, yeah, just kind of the way that works. And if they, some visa types require that you charge tuition and be, and not use state funding, but for foreign exchange students, they allow it for one year. And the idea is the cultural exchange and, and the benefit that the, I mean, the resident students get from the experience as well. Had language to, that, so that when we do the excess cost calculations, we talked about this last year, we don't use the district level excess cost calculations for anything, but we have to add a percentage to it. The bill has currently, the law is currently written, does not calculate a percentage, so we didn't report one. We got asked why we didn't report it, and we said that's not what the law says. So now there's a provisor that says there will be a percentage, so we'll be doing that. And the last one is a 1.5% lapse of KSD's operating funds. So the way the, the way the state does a budget cut is they, they give us all the money they said they were going to give us, and then they say, but we're going to take 1.5% back. So they lapse that later on. The, the good thing about that is that we get to decide how that's doing it, so we'll work with John and figure out how we can best do that. But this is where I talked about that you were told you could give yourself whatever raise you want, but you have less money to do it. Yeah. So. So there's, so actually, that is all the things I had because I talked about the other ones this morning.
Any other conversation, board members, on this? Dennis?
Yeah, sure. Kathy? Frank, going clear back to the beginning where you're just talking about the state budget, do you know anything about the, our treasurer, Steve Johnson, putting the state budget in overnight money market and making millions of dollars? That, I've heard that. Is that, do you know anything about that?
So I, I don't know about that. I mean, there are rules about how, how funds can be burned. I know that one of the conversations this past year was ARPA interest funds. So they do talk about interest funds and then being able to spend those funds on one-time things. So I, I know that the, the state earns interest on funds. I mean, the budget stabilization fund has $1.8 billion. I think it probably behooves the state to be making as much interest on that as you can so that then you can use that for, for positive things, whether that's reducing taxes or, or paying for programs in the future. But Dennis, I don't, I don't know anything specific about it.
Well, I, I can't factuate that, but I just, you know, hearing that makes me think that there may be money available that they wouldn't need to take money away from us.
So I do know that they budget interest funds as part of the, part of the budget. I don't, I have not paid a lot of attention about where they come from, but some of them get talked about specifically.
Debbie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you don't mind, I can address that because it's going to be on YouTube. It was presented at Pachyderm Club in Wichita.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So at this point, I believe, what do we got? Oh, okay. More coming. We're going to get the federal side. That was the state. Now we're going to get the federal.
And Madam Chair, you'll be happy to know that for $7, you can buy a five-pack of pocket protectors from Amazon that will arrive tomorrow morning. Again, it'll be on a receive item next month for you to reimburse me. So there's really just kind of three main things for me to update you from the federal end as it relates to the agency. Some of this we've already talked about, and you've received notifications from Commissioner Watson. The first was a, and these are kind of in reverse order. The U.S. Department of Education on occasion will ask for verifications that state education agencies are complying with certain laws such as FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. We received a letter about a month ago, maybe a month and a half, from the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, asking not only for us to certify that we were in compliance with FERPA, but they asked us to share that message with every public school in Kansas and wanted us to collect a verification that every school district also had policies consistent with FERPA. The concern, my understanding was, there were rumors that there were some school districts somewhere in the world that had certain policies that allowed school staff to not share information about the students with the students' parents. I am not any, aware of any districts in Kansas having such policies. And we are not responsible for enforcing FERPA on behalf of the U.S. Department of Education, never have been. And I've, I mean, I've said that for years, if not a decade. I will tell you that many state education agencies discussed how to respond to this, and I believe most of them, some of them did not follow this path. Some of, some of the state education agencies, and I think New Hampshire was the one that was touted as the example that the, the feds wanted us to follow, whereas they set up their own website so that states could, or the state could collect this information, the certifications from the individual school districts. Because I don't like my client taking on more legal obligations than they are required to do, I advised Commissioner Watson, and we simply sent a certification, a letter back to the Office of Civil Rights saying, we're aware of FERPA, we are compliant with FERPA, we are not aware of any issues with any state, pardon me, local education agencies not being in compliance with FERPA. Have a nice day. And we did not receive any kind of response to that yet. I'm not anticipating we receive any kind of response. So that is how that particular issue was handled. There was another letter that was received by the state education agencies, not just us, it was everybody, regarding verification that we were complying with Title VI. And the certification that they were asking state education agencies to sign was, verify for us not only that you are complying with the letter of law of Title VI and you're not discriminating based on race, ethnicity, or national origin, we also want you to certify that you are complying with our interpretation of Title VI and the regulations based on the lawsuit that was, went to the U.S. Supreme Court and had to do with the admissions policies of Harvard University and University of North Carolina. Kansas public schools don't have admissions policies based on favoring some students over others based on your race or national origin. And we certain, the state board certainly doesn't have any such policies, and the department doesn't enforce anything like that. We were not going to sign something that says, yes, we promise to agree with your interpretation, and I'll tell you, I don't agree with their interpretation, of what Title VI requires. So we did send a certification, just a letter advising, not only did we originally certify compliance with Title VI, remember yesterday, I talked about all these little requirements that the feds have, that if we're going to accept their money, we have to agree to follow their rules? We agreed to follow their rules. We never stopped agreeing to follow those rules. School districts also, whenever they ask to draw down those federal funds, they have to provide those same kind of verifications. We didn't ask the school districts to resubmit those verifications. We knew they were already in place. They didn't go away. They didn't magically disappear. And so we simply reminded the U.S. Department of Education that not only have we always been in compliance with Title VI, but we will remind you that we are still in compliance with Title VI. And we did not mail in the form that they asked us. We mailed in, well, basically, the form that actually had gone through all the hoops for the federal government to send us a demand letter, if you will. We signed that, and we sent that back to them. Again, we have not heard any kind of response from them, saying that they didn't accept that, nor were we expecting any kind of response. The last one has to do with ESER funding, and I know you all have read a lot about this and heard quite a bit. Here's the Reader's Digest version. "They promised us a lot, plenty of time to continue spending down federal funds as a result of trying to recover from pandemic. For years, we have relied to our detriment. They told us we would still be able to have this time to spend the money. We were still spending it appropriately. There was never any allegation that the means by which we were spending the money was inappropriate." They just sent a letter to every state education agency, said, nope, we changed our mind, you don't get to spend the money anymore. Well, we'd already kind of allocated quite a bit of that money. We'd already signed many contracts that, many of which you all approved. We were not the only ones that were disappointed in this. There is a group of states, I think there were 12 or 14, Mark, do you remember how many? I'm going to say 14, states that came together and filed suit in the U.S. District of New York, I think it was the Southern District of New York, the state of New York being the lead plaintiff. They filed suit against the U.S. Department of Education alleging, among many things, that they did not properly abide by federal law in order for them to stop or in order for them to change their mind on allowing us to spend the money. They didn't follow the Administrative Procedures Act. Along with that suit, which is still ongoing, they asked for a preliminary injunction, which is basically, judge, if you don't stop this bad thing from happening now, first of all, we think we're going to win this case, but if you wait until this case is over before we get any kind of relief, it's going to be too little, too late. So the judge has the ability to issue an injunction that stops the, in this case, the defendants, the U.S. Department of Education, from doing what they were trying to do. That was granted. The federal judge did say, okay, for the plaintiff states, U.S. Department of Education, your letter of March 29th is no longer valid. You cannot freeze that money. You have to allow them to draw down the funds as if you never wrote that letter. If you want to freeze their, or stop that reimbursement, then you have to give them at least 14 days' advance notice. And again, this is only for the plaintiffs that filed suit. Weren't sure if the U.S. Department of Education was going to fight that or not. Didn't know if they were going to say, okay, here's your 14-day notice. My understanding is there was roughly $200 million receipts were turned into the U.S. Department of Education almost immediately after that injunction was filed. As you imagine, we would probably do the same thing. You give me a day to send in a bunch of receipts, here you go. And as a Happy Mother's Day President, the U.S. Department of Education did issue a letter to the plaintiff states telling them, well, you all have been abusing us and we're tired of it, and fine, you now have 14 days from today to send in your receipts to draw down those funds that you allegedly have spent correctly. And I imagine that's what those states are doing. I don't know if they plan on contesting that 14-day drawdown time limit or not. The litigation is still ongoing. And I don't know if I mentioned this or not, we are not a party to that suit. But that is what's going on with the ESER litigation. Yeah. And that's pretty much the update that I have for you on far, as far as the federal stuff. Commissioner Watson, was there anything I didn't mention to them yet that we talked about? I think those were the main things that, or Mark, if you have any other, just generic updates on how those things are progressing.
Yeah.
So.
So we're good. So I think at this point, we discussed going into executive session to have actual attorney-client conversation about the situation. So.
How much time?
I would say 20 minutes. I don't like being rushed.
You're going to need at least 20 minutes.
Okay, let's go 30, if you think we need at least. Let's do 30.
30 minutes. I'm going to start at 1:10.
Do we need a break before we?
You've got to get people.
People time, okay. So 1:10?
1:10. 1:10 for 30 minutes.
And then we need to name who's going in.
Scott.
Frank.
Okay.
And Mark.
Scott. Mark. And who else?
Frank.
Frank.
And myself.
Myself.
Okay. Let's see if I can do this. "I move the Kansas State Board of Education recess into executive session to discuss the subject of a potential litigation, pending litigation, legal matters with legal counsel, which is justified pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with an attorney on legal matters. The session will begin at 1:10 p.m. For 30 minutes, no action will be taken during this session. Opening at will resume at 1:35 p.m.
1:40.
1:40?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry. And we invite, Scott, Mark, Frank, and Dr. Watson are invited to join the executive session.
Melanie? All in favor? Do we get to bring the two in? Yeah, okay. 10-0? 9-0? Oh, you're, okay, so 9. Anybody against? Present not voting? Okay, 9-0-1. Okay, so we have approximately, by my computer, seven minutes. So if you need a quick break, make sure you're back here so we can start on time. And then, yes, we have to invite our, have to invite our guests out. Have to invite our guest out.
We are back, but we do need to go back into executive session. So I believe I sir Zach is going to start that.
I move to extend the same executive session for additional 10 minutes and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 1:50.
Second.
Just as asking.
People of all attorney-client privilege.
Same justification.
Same justification, same people. I need a second. Melanie, all in favor? Danny, are you going? Okay. So nine opposed, nine one. So nine in favor, one opposed. So we will now go right back into executive session. Danny, are you ready? Okay. So nine opposed, nine one. So nine in favor, one opposed. So we will now go right back into executive session. Okay, we are back. And as stated, no action was going to be taken. Finishing out our agenda for the day, we are now at board travel request.
I have an addition.
Yes.
On June two and three, I would like to go to Washington DC for a mini-conference with NASB. There is no cost to the board. They're covering the cost for this one because it is a smaller conference. And I don't think that I qualify for pay when I'm not in the state. So I'm just letting the board know.
Actually, well, I know we have to approve, but I'm saying on the state level, we can do anything we want on your pay.
Okay.
Because we, well, or do I have to wait till July 1st to say that? That might be a July 1st question, actually. Melanie. Because we're so disconnected, we don't have to follow statute. But I think that actually, that hammer comes down July 1st. So.
It's a wash.
So, okay. So unless somebody has an issue with Melanie traveling free of charge on the board to NASB conference. Michelle?
June 16th, we've, we've set that date for the negotiations with the KNI for a three-hour meeting at KST. It's a Monday, I think.
This goes that far, but that's, okay. Anything actually on here that anybody has an issue with? Hopefully you would say something sooner, but, okay. So motion to approve the board travel requests. Betty, seconded by Michelle. All in favor? That is a 10-0 vote and passes. And the next thing is future agenda requests. Do we have any future requests? Ms. Betty?
I do have one. I think that, and this goes back to screen time real quickly, I think it would be good for us to get some idea of how districts are actually using screen time to hear from them.
Like the actual school devices?
To hear from someone in the, at a district level that can share with us how they utilize screen time in schools, just to see.
Thank you. Anybody else? Melanie?
If I may tag on to Betty, I would like to continue to add to that. It would be nice for that discussion to center in some way around appropriate age-based, ages and stages-based use of those screens. If we are so hair on fire about reading, I really want to be hearing the role that screens are and maybe aren't playing in students learning how to read well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I guess, and that's definitely on my complete radar to make sure we keep having that. Dennis?
We had a good report from Shane today, you know, about the sub teacher licensing, the modification. It would just be fun to maybe over the summer hear some testimonies from either, you know, administrators, like we heard from Amber, Dr. Amber yesterday, that just to give us kind of an ongoing report of how that's working. Because I, I've had, you know, conversations with superintendents who are just, it's just such an important element of their, of their staff. The other thing is, I'm kind of going to put Mark on the spot. I did mention to him a couple of months ago, if he would just bring to us from his legal training or understanding of what the First Amendment is all about. There's so much in, that's going on in our country about free speech, what that entails, how church versus state, how that works out in the public arena. I think it would be a good civic kind of lesson for us and give us, I just, I'm really concerned about, you know, some of the temperature, whatever you might say, political temperature of our country. And the First Amendment is such a rock solid part of our constitution. And I would just like to kind of give him an assignment, I guess. Maybe do that in, in July, because that's Freedom Month.
Oh, there you go.
And so if he would say, take that seriously and maybe work that into his report to us in July.
Okay.
I, I love talking about that subject because I think it's so relevant to not only where we are today, but generations moving forward. Our country is going to, next year, we're going to celebrate 250 years.
I know.
And so, and it's, it's really a kind of a hot topic. And I'd like to be able to talk openly about it.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Anything else? Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to know a little bit more from Shane about that proximity, how KCK uses online teachers. It looks like they're the runt of the group that's using that, that school district. And I just was curious as far as, is that, there's quite a few students that are using that teaching online. And I know that we discussed that in-person learning is best. So I was just curious if there are any, like, how long we've been doing that? Because I just read about it in the Kansas City Star.
Right. And, and you sent that to me, and I haven't had a chance to fully read that yet. But, so you were talking about full-on classroom, all they have is an online teacher.
Yeah.
Okay.
And like, when, when did that start? And then how, how much has it grown since it has started? Like, did it start during COVID? I mean, when did, I guess I didn't even really realize it.
Yeah.
And then under which license, like, how is that?
And how are we assuring the teachers are from Kansas, right?
Yeah, they have to be a licensed teacher. I mean, they have to be a licensed teacher in Kansas. But, but I, like, yeah, there's just, I just, I just more discussion. So if we can discuss it.
I actually know somebody who's using that, and they used it because their daughter was being bullied, and that was their way of being able to pull her out.
No, they did. She's talking about actually inside the classrooms in the school.
Oh, it's anonymous?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because she does it at home.
Yeah, no, no, we're not talking about a homeschool situation. Okay.
A homeschool, this is public.
Connie?
Yes, I sent you an email.
Did you?
I sent you a text message a while back, and I would like us to explore the national human sexuality education standards and how they compare with Kansas. These are national standards. And what are our standards on human sexuality?
Great. And I would second that because I got that, and I'm seconding it so we make sure it gets on the agenda.
No, it's already on my list, 100%.
Because I did get a seven-page letter from a parent.
Okay. Okay. All right. But yes, that, and I did get your text, and it is on the list. It's not always easy to quickly get them on the agenda, but we are working on that. So please know that. Okay. Melanie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question, if you will indulge me. It kind of fits here, and I know you're getting ready to do the chair report. But I would love to see us working on state board goals, which we're supposed to be setting in our retreats, and would just like to hear a little bit more about where that might fit in.
Where it's going to fit in?
As future agenda items.
Yeah, as, okay. So I think it's going to take working with Dr. Watson as he tries to pull together what our conversations have been. And starts bringing, so we can start tweaking, and then yes, how we want to drive the agenda with those goals. Thank you. I like that. Okay. Okay. Other than that, do you have anything else, Mark, you want to say? Because we don't, didn't manage to get you actually, you know, on the agenda. So I apologize. I'm not sure what happened there. And then as far as board comments, we've been doing a lot of commenting. I'm, I'm kind of done. I don't know if everybody else is. The only thing I'm going to shout out because I promised it is Dodge City. I went to their educator signing event. So they had 12 high school seniors who are purposing to go to school to become an educator. It was really fun. This is their second year they've done that. And they have them sign letters of promise, basically, I forget what they called them, which is where the district is saying, once you have your education, we will give you an interview. We promise to find, to, if possible, find you a place here. And one of those 12 is actually going to use the apprenticeship program. So it was very cool, and it was fun. They make it, they make it a big deal. Madam Chair, I would like to give a shout out to a school I visited because I was mightily impressed with Wellington Middle School, especially their teacher who teaches. He has the kids build raised gardens out of old pallets, and they have composting, and he has partnering. I was just very impressed.
Very nice.
And the school had a kid, a room full of kids reading books. There you go.
Absolutely. Okay. With that, oh, Dr. Watson?
Deborah, you might just note that 30 seconds before adjournment, Jim Porter had to leave the meeting. Well, the minutes may want to reflect it upon adjournment that we only had nine currently present.
Thank you for, I didn't realize. Okay. We will adjourn our meeting for today until June, and I've lost it already, 10th and 11th, I believe, is our next meeting. So thank you. Good to see you, Dennis.